It's very nice to see you again.
Good to see you all.
How are you doing?
I'm fine. My voice is getting better a little bit each day.
Are you? Good, good. Particularly in your line of work, that had to be terribly, terribly, or still is, I'm sure, really frustrating. And I would start in talking. That's what I would do. I know I would.
Well, good evening, everyone. I have six o'clock. And I'd like to call the City of Dexter City Council meeting for Monday, April 12th, 2021 to order. If everybody could join me by either standing or sitting for the Pledge of Allegiance as you as you feel comfortable. I'll try to start us off. I pledge allegiance
of the United of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Julie, I miss you.
Ms. Jones, how are you doing today?
I am fine.
Could you please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Cousins.
Here.
You gotta tell me where you're at.
Remotely from the City of Dexter.
Okay. Councilmember Fisher.
Yes, I'm attending remotely from Alma, Michigan.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here remotely from the City of Dexter, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here, attending remotely from the City of Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Michelle.
Dexter City, USA.
Mayor Keough.
Present from my home in the City of Dexter, Michigan.
Student rep Alex Gilbert.
Present remotely from Webster Township.
And student member Isabella Malik.
Present remotely from Dexter, Michigan.
Okay.
Okay, great. We have a quorum. Item C is approval of the meeting minutes. We have our regular city council meeting minutes from March 22nd. And the city council work session, the all committee work session from March 29th.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Griffin. Thank you.
Second Cousins.
Second by Cousins. Thank you, Paul. Jamie, anything to add?
A minor thing on page 11, under item eight. There's just some tab indent issue there. Uh, more substantially on page five was the vote on number four, the purchase of the wood chipper. It's listed here as unanimous. My recollection is that I voted no, and I think that Councilmember Michelle's also voted no, but I would ask for his him to confirm that himself. And I don't know if anybody asked your phone.
Yeah, I had a five, I had a five two vote.
Okay. I think I was in, probably Zach. And that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you for those corrections. Mr. Cousins, you supported the motion. Anything to add, change?
No, it looked like it pretty clean. Thank you.
Okay, Alex, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I have a really, just a couple of quick corrections, or suggestions possibly. On page two, under item D, on number one. In the last sentence there where it says redistricting of the United States can get congressional Michigan House and Michigan signed districts. It may be good to consider putting a comma after house. It's not necessary, but in other instances where the sentences were similar, there was a comma used there. So for consistency, it could be good to have one.
Okay.
Um, let me scroll down. So then on page five, under item four, where it says for the amount not to exceed, exceed is capitalized under the consideration for number three, but not in number four.
Okay.
Um, and then on page six, there's a similar indentation issue as Ms. Griffin brought up in another instance with the word are under Ms. Knight's comment.
Okay.
And then I believe I have one more. Uh, yes, on page 11, um, under the bullet point over the past year. Uh, the final bit of the sense there is a little bit repetitive. I might be better to say, and are currently working on an amendment on accessory dwelling units. And then end the air, end there, or say are currently discussing. That is being discussed repeats.
Yep.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good catch, is that what's good catch?
Well done. Thank you for those comments. Any other council members with comments on the minutes? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to accept the meeting minutes. Both sets, please.
Okay, uh, Hubbard.
Yes.
Cousins.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Keough.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We have two items under prearranged participation this evening. Item number one is discussion or introduction up from Julia Roberts from Western Washtenaw Express. Is Julia on? I see her name there.
I am. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Julia. You have 10 minutes and we look forward to meeting you.
Great, thank you. It's nice to see you all. And so just a little bit about me, if you haven't met me yet, I'm the new executive director at WAVE. I've been here for about five months working with Paul as their representative for the City of Dexter. And before the wave, I was working with the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority just next door for about nine years before starting my own company called Low Mobility, which was focusing on innovation equity within the shared transportation space. And so I'm really excited to be here. I think we've got a good group that we're looking forward to the future on. And our first strategic board retreat is coming up likely next month with the nonprofit enterprise at work or new in Washtenaw County. Um, just to give you a little bit of background on some of the things that we've been working on most recently besides transitioning remotely and and for our office staff as much as possible and continuing to have safe transportation practices for COVID-19. We've also been trying to plan ahead. And so we've been working on some pilot programs, namely a partnership with one called Phoenix Mobility Rising that is sponsored by ARP and Toyota to do online booking and reservations and also an app for some of our door-to-door transportation, like Dexter door-to-door. And our lifeline services for non-emergency medical transportation. And that app or online reservation program is called Ride at 50 Plus and is geared towards seniors, 50 and older adults. But it's open to everyone. And so it now allows people to try and make reservations online in addition to over the phone. Um, we're also partnering with them. I'd like to maybe share my screen briefly if I can. If it's possible to enable that, I can go ahead and we have kind of a really good announcement this evening to do free fares on trips for vaccines to the Pierce Lake Elementary Mass Vaccination Site with WAVE in partnership with the Washtenaw County Health Department. And this isn't thanks to our board and our CARES Act funding so that anyone who has an appointment there can get a ride for free. So it's less of a barrier.
You should be able to share.
Okay, great. So here's the flyer that is going to be going out in the media tomorrow morning. It's officially been shared this evening. And if there are any other media sources that you recommend this evening and you like to put them in the chat, I'd love to distribute it more widely. We are going to be also partnering likely later in the year, starting training in the summer, possibly beginning an actual app for ourselves, which may have real-time information as of this fall. We're waiting on final approvals for potential state grant funding. So all of these pilots are grant funded. And our third project is one called Quantum. It's an, basically an automated wheelchair securment system that is made by the leading wheelchair securment system manufacturer in the country, Key Strength, who does all of the wheelchair securment settings on our buses currently. But it allows people with just the touch of a button, if they have a mobility device like a wheelchair or scooter, to actually secure themselves. And so it creates an additional level of independence. It also improves on-time performance and reliability for people. And I know we have a lot of really good support in the community, even during the pandemic. We had a at least one gentleman and several other compliments on saying particularly with, particularly with dialysis treatment that we were a lifesaver. And so I like to think that this is just building upon the good work that we've been doing to date. So I know that our ridership is down about 50%, which is not uncommon across the country. In fact, since our vehicles are at half capacity for seating and spacing and safety, we're pretty much maximizing the capacity that we can for essential trips to critical infrastructure like healthcare and groceries and frontline jobs. So we're kind of the frontline to the frontline. But we're also looking forward to staying safe as practices for that stay in place. And then when things open up, hopefully later this year, we'll be able to do more in-person engagement. So I'm going to show one more slide. We have, we did a public engagement in in the past couple of months, just for minor service changes. And this primarily affects the Community Connector that services residents in the City of Dexter and employees as they travel along Jackson Road. So it's in between Dexter and Ann Arbor. In the past, we had transferred with the ride at the Meyer on Jackson and Zeb Road. When COVID hit and AAAT had to cut some of their services, we moved that transport point back to Wagner. What that meant for people is that we were serving Meyer in the opposite direction on request. And so there's a lot of ridership at that location. So we're looking to change that to be directly served in both directions, at least until service returns to and at Meyer likely in the end of August. And then also there are stops in between, particularly between Zebra Wagner that were serviced by AAT in the past. And now Wave may have the opportunity to, we've been informally picking people up, but more formally let people know, hey, you're at the stop, you don't have to walk an extremely long distance to get a ride. So with those small changes and tweaks that we can make in the interim, we're hoping to do more larger activities and if possible, meet in person later on in the year for potential larger planning for the future with the communities, possibly this fall. So look forward to that. And I will just, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And I know I submitted this to Justin to share with you all at some point for budgeting purposes, but to give you an idea, the Community Connector was about, and this is an estimate, but about 17% of rides were from the City of Dexter. Now, we can't break it down exactly. And so it's around 770 trips this year. About 120 were Dexter door-to-door trips, which is about 8% of overall program service and about what is that, 14% or almost 120 trips also for our lifeline, which is county-wide travel. I think I'll just end by saying we are, while we were fortunate to receive some additional funding for this year from the federal and state government to cover some of our expenses where we had lower ridership, we don't know to what extent that will continue through the American Rescue Plan Act. We anticipate some, but we're not sure what level yet. And then we are really happy that during this challenging time, we've seen a lot of a lot of people come forward and say how much it's meant to have the way continue to serve as much as we could after having been closed down for the first few months as we got our preparations in place. And we're, we're looking to the future to budget the same as we have in the past so that we can continue to bring ridership back to where it has been and beyond. It may take two to three years to get to that point or, you know, anywhere between one and five based on industry standards. But we've had no complaints in the last month, and I think that's a real testament to the service that we continue to provide. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions and look forward to hearing more about the City of Dexter.
Thank you for your good work there. Bella, you have your hand up.
Hi, I really have any questions. I just wanted to comment on like what I heard. So like concerning the vaccine part of the thing and how you're thinking of starting to get free rides in the future, I think to go to vaccine places, I think that's a really good idea. So like I applaud you on that. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. We're really excited to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bella. Any questions for Julia? I know it's tough to provide a service in this time, but keep up the good work, Julia. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put my contact info in the chat as well in case anyone has questions in the future. And of course, Paul is in touch with me. So he and I can, can work with you all on anything related to the city.
Will we be getting our, our contracts for the next year soon, draft ones?
Yeah, so our board had reviewed some of the costs from last month based on what I submitted to Justin. And they're going to re-review it next month to finalize it. But we will be requesting the same amount as in past years. And then our goal is to reconcile based on the funding that we received from the federal and state government, which we're not sure what that is just yet for next year.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you.
Well, not to extend this, but it's been just a delight to have, have her in our in our organization. She's very competent. She's thoughtful and she does get out and and let you participate in, you know, when she's got a question, she calls you up or sends you email. So we're happy to have Julie with us and just looking forward to being able to use her skills more when the time comes.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Our next item under prearranged participation is ping pong Dexter. And a, we have Jim and Lori Sprague, I think, on the line.
Yes, we are here. We do not have access to sharing yet, sharing screen.
Well, we have, the council has what you submitted in our packet, so we can. Yeah. I presume everybody's read it.
Now we've got it. Okay. All right. Yes, you, you've had the packet, so I'm going to go through this quite quickly to maximize our Q and A time. But the concept here is sort of forward-thinking for the, for Dexter's future. The, we were going to talk just a little bit about some specific proposals and some ideas that we, we've got in order to accomplish this. It's all centered kind of on Dexter Parks. We've been delighted with the growth of Dexter Park since we first moved here in 1988. The thing we like the best is how diverse they are and how in recent years, they have been increasing the types of activities that can be formed up, can be done at the different parks. We think this is in line with that basic philosophy and concept. Dexter has had ping pong in the past. I think one of your council members may, may mention some presence at, at Elmo's when we had this across from the, across from the supermarket for about a year and a half. This was a unique place. It was a lot of fun. We had a tremendous amount of intergenerational play and played by people of variety of different skill levels. It was a very welcoming environment. And it was sad when it closed, but it kind of was the genesis of the idea that, that we had once, once we didn't have Elmo's any longer. There is precedent all over the place for municipal ping pong internationally in big cities in the US and closer here to home and in Michigan as well. I'll give you a couple of quick, a little bit of rationale. Ping pong attracts people and groups. It's very accessible. It's it's a healthy activity and there's a lot of social positives basically due to the, the tremendous accessibility that ping pong has compared with many other activities and sports. As you're probably all familiar, the participation in, in physical activity and sports peaks in this country at about age 15, 14 for Little League Soccer, et cetera. And then it trails off tremendously with, with age as, as we age, particularly team participation as well as individual. This is a way to maybe make a dent in that. Again, the ping pong opportunities are accessible and, and enjoyable. Easy to find literature about just how ping pong increases social and ethnic interaction as well as, as I mentioned with Elmo's, you can get a lot of intergenerational activity. London's been doing this for more than a decade. They do it a little bit different. They have both indoor and outdoor. They have hundreds of tables, but it is temporary. The, in Manhattan, once our son moved there, we became aware that there's a couple parks that have got permanent installations there. There's a great award-winning video. I've got a, I think you'll find a link to that in, in the notes that kind of shows how that went over in, in, in New York. There's another park in, actually, this is the Bryant Park, which had the video on it, but also Tompkins Square. So it's present in New York, it's present in Chicago. It's present in Toronto. This was an interesting team-up between Rotary International and Toronto. Reportedly, they have more than 100 of these ping pong tables throughout the city. And at a cost of about 4,000 piece, they seem to be centering on the concrete variety. Grand Rapids somewhat recently has got four of them put in. Their, their Parks Director imported the concept from Denver. And even more recently, Kalamazoo got a $75,000 DNR grant. They yanked out their basketball court and old playground equipment that was, I guess, not used much and put in Gaga Ball and Ping Pong. So a couple specifics, sizes is a little bit more than a four by eight sheet of plywood. The floor area required can vary tremendously. If you're going full bore Olympic, it's a huge area, as you can see in this lower photo. But recreational can make use of a far, far smaller footprint, which is relevant when we start talking about where would we put such a thing? Three concepts, ideas that, that we have had of candidates would be Monument Park, Peace Park and Mill Creek Park. And to show a little bit more zoom in, one concept at least for a monument would be to add a couple here at the, at the beer tent location next to the sidewalk. That leaves potentially plenty of room for all the, the current activities, including the, including Dexter Days, once we start getting that back. Peace Park, it's got plenty of room. These are approximate to scale. I'm not going to, they're not to the inch, but this is to kind of give you a basic idea how much room something like that would take up. The small square inside, of course, is the table itself. The rest is just the surround or the pad for it. Another option here would be Mill Creek Park down by, below the library. You could put them end to end, or you could put them, as I've shown here, side by side on a single pad. Costs for such a thing vary depending on, on how much you want to, how much of a warranty you want. The very heavy-duty cement and steel varieties are typically four to 5K as was kind of listed. That's what Toronto and some of the other places were, were, were paying. Those typically have greater than a 10-year warranty, a 10-year or more, and are pretty, pretty resistant to, to weather and vandalism, et cetera. The surface preparation needs some consideration, especially with respect to ADA concerns. Putting it on grass is probably a bad idea, but there are a lot of other options that, that may be worth considering for, for Dexter. Equipment is not much of a problem. Once you get the table in place, the rest of the stuff is, is lightweight, small, cheap. The pad costs, just doing some spitballing here on, on general cost, depends how big and what material you use. Grass, of course, is free, but probably not a good option. Other things are going to be highly more desirable. Table costs again, probably about 5,000, very heavy-duty. Talked about that. So total costs would range probably between 2,000 and $20,000 for a pair of tables at some location. Funding, we have some concepts. I've been in touch with Rotary. They've expressed some interest. The Parks Commission has expressed some interest. I have some additional ideas that, that given city council approval, we could, we could talk about. Our recommendation for something that probably be best would be in Monument Park. I think that'd get the most bang for the buck because of the visibility, the draw to downtown foot traffic. And just the ability to have a bigger impact and more, more people participating. That'd probably be around 17,000 in, in costs. I believe that ADA compliance is likely not an issue with the proper pad preparation. Again, an intergenerational is a big deal. Beer tent should not be a problem. There's already, during Dexter Days, you put up tables there anyhow, it's just too fewer to set up. And beer pong once in a while, probably not a problem. That's what I've got. Any questions?
Thank you, Jim. Council, have any questions? I personally think it's a neat idea. I have to think about the locations, Jim. I, you've piqued my interest, though. I like, I kind of like the idea.
I am hopeful that with some inquiries and, and discussion with some of the downtown businesses that we might get some interest and possibly that could even help with some, some of the fundraising. I do, I do believe that the, the whole concept of attracting more people and families and young people and, and intergenerational opportunities to downtown is, should be a good thing for, for all of, all of downtown Dexter.
Yeah, and I don't know how, Jim didn't introduce us that well. Of course, we've lived in the city since 2005. We were out in Syo Township before that. We're, we're not gym teachers or fitness nuts. We're engineers, which also makes me think that, you know, this is something that can be accessible to a lot of kinds of people.
Not, not just the jocks.
Understood, understood. Thank you, Lori, for joining. Zach, you have your hand up?
Yep. Thank you for bringing this fun idea to us. It's, it's always good when, when more folks are, are thinking and not afraid to come forward. Has this been, and I guess this is more for staff, has this been discussed by the Parks and Recreation and Tree folks yet?
So Jim and Lori did come to Parks and Rec's February meeting, I believe it was.
That sounds right.
And, and gave, gave the presentation and Parks was, was receptive. And they asked that the presentation be given to council and get council feedback before going full bore or gung ho on, on the concept.
All right. So what I take away is Parks and Recreation kind of wanted a tip of the hat or formal motion from council to work at it, look at it more closely. Is that correct?
Um, or the, the tip of the hat, you know, so if, if, if they, if Jim and Lori came to council and, you know, there was significant disinterest, then I think that would give Parks and Rec their, their answer, but that's not, that's not necessarily what I've, I've heard so far.
Do you want a formal motion?
Well, Zach, Zach, let's, um, let's, let's, before we make any motion, let's hear from some of the others that have their hands up and then come back. I mean, if, if there's general consensus, it's a good idea. Maybe we can have them move forward with just recommending a spot because, you know, we'll have to work it into the budget, right? I mean, that's what this is all, the timing of this is perfect because we're going to be talking about, you know, budgeting for stuff, so.
I will just say that my last comment is I, it's spot in Monument Park is tough for me. It feels a little bit different from the general use of that park. So that's, that's a hard square that I'm trying to round right now, but that's, that would be something for Parks and Recreation entries to give more thought to.
Thanks, Zach. Jamie?
Yep, thanks. Yeah, I'm the liaison to Parks and Rec. So it's my second time hearing, hearing this idea, which I agree is a fun idea. And I was just going to add that I think in our discussion at Parks and Rec, we also were And I was just gonna add that I think in our discussion at Parks and Rec, we also were talking mostly about the location. And then I think otherwise we were helping brainstorm other ideas about fundraising and other things like maybe businesses would sell the balls with their logo on it from like a little coin dispenser, you know, just other ways of implementing it. So I think any suggestions people have about the location would be helpful to bring back to Parks and Rec. I think there was generally some hesitancy also about Monument Park. I could see it going down at Mill Creek Park closer to the stairs in the library over in that section. But I know we're also talking about potentially redoing the playground at Mill Creek Park and we've had the skating rink down there at least two years ago. So, I mean, there are just some things to think about there. So I I think location like it seems like has come up here was also is what was coming up at Parks and Rec. So other comments related to that would be helpful.
Thanks, Jamie. Alex?
I agree that the location would make most sense for Mill Creek Park. There's the playgrounds there. I see lots of families going there to um play. I think that's a really great location. However, I am a little concerned with the price, especially given the the situation that we are in now. So if maybe there is a way to mitigate some of that price or see some interest from other community members, that'd be really helpful to me as well.
Thanks, Alex. Well, I think, is there any council member that does not want Parks to explore location for us?
I I I think Paul had a comment.
Oh, is Paul's hand up? Sorry, Paul, go ahead, Paul.
All right. Well, I I was one of those that played the almost. I grew up playing ping pong. I think my first remiss is when I was about seven or eight years old, playing with my friends in his basement, going to church camp and scout camp, playing there. And then you think you're real good until somebody really comes along and shows you you're not very good at all, okay? And that's, that was great. I remember my brother-in-law convinced us to go down to Detroit, down there at Cobo Hall to play one time and and I told him this was a real fool's idea, and it was, but we we had a lot of fun anyway. But when Elmo came, was up with this idea, it was great just to be able to think that you could could do this again, you know, at my age with a couple hip surgeries. It was daunting as well. And then they they, there's a lot of people that move pretty fast. The younger people are amazing in their speeds. So if you get people involved in it again, ping pong is a great sport. Keep your acting and play till you're ninety years old, a hundred years old, if you keep moving, okay? You don't have to play somebody kid that's eighteen years old. So this is a good idea. We ought to try to explore. I think some of the ideas of other organizations like the Rotary or other groups may be involved in this and they explore it. I don't have a specific spot for it yet, but it could be, there's a variety of different places that you could find in the city that would work there, I'm sure. So I'm in favor a hundred percent, and I would like to explore it and hope it does move forward and that we enthusiastically support it so that we can see another activity in the city that that nobody else that I know around this area has. Let's be one of the first ones that could do it.
Except for Kalamazoo.
Yeah, well, they're they're not really around us.
Well said. Thanks, Paul. Wow, or Donna, anything, Dad?
I'm in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a very good presentation and I I'm happy to learn more about it, talking about it.
Okay, so I think that's the the general tip of the hat, Justin, that Parks needs. Jim, thanks for bringing that in front of us after bringing it to Parks. Maybe we can have a recommendation back on a a first location potentially, or maybe a first and a second, so to speak, Justin.
Yep, I'll 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 take the fact Parks at their their next meeting, which is a little later this month.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity. I sure appreciate it. And I look forward to working with the Parks Commission to figure out a good location. There's, there's plenty of good options. It'll be fun.
Sounds great. Thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, item E this evening is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve our agenda, please?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Fisher. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, wow, thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote. Jamie, Jamie has her hand up. Sorry, I caught it.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was just gonna have a reminder about any disclosures of conflicts of interest.
Thank you for remembering that. Anybody have any conflicts or anticipating conflicts during tonight's meeting?
Yeah. Zach? Under the consent agenda, some of the bills are going to my employer, so I will abstain from that.
Okay, thank you for disclosing that. Carol, if you could add a a little note on that, I would appreciate it.
I'll put it, we'll put that on there and then in the actual one.
Thank you.
Ready for the roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. We are down to page two of our agenda. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is a request for industrial facilities exemption submitted by Utilities Instrumentation Service, U I S, more commonly known for property located at twenty-two ninety Bishop Circle East. So I'd like to open the public hearing and we'll take public comment on this. I think Chris Knight is on, so Chris, if you could be ready to at least say a few words, I'd appreciate it there. And we'll open the public hearing at six thirty-six. We'll take comment, we'll close the public hearing, and then the council can consider action. So we are now open and in in our public hearing. Chris, would you like to say a few words?
I sure would. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for considering U I S for an I F E for our new building. And I think I I want a special thank you to Jamie Griffin, who recalculated our I F E and came up with a longer period. So thank you very much, Jamie, for doing that.
Yeah, sure thing.
First of all, it's great to see so many familiar faces I haven't seen for a while and are continuing struggles with COVID as we deal with virtual worlds and not getting out as much as we are. So nice to see everybody. And I think just to kind of refresh where we're at with all this. U I S, of course, we acquired the land next to us. We're moving in the very near future from our nine thousand square foot building to a twenty thousand square foot building. It's gonna provide us a lot of opportunity for growth. You know, over the last month or so, we hired four more people, intending to hire a number of new people as well. If all goes well over the next couple of weeks, A R Brower will have our building done. Actually, I think we're applying Wednesday for our final building inspections for approvals. So that's coming along very well. Getting office furniture put in, getting ready to move on May seventh, if all goes well. Right now with our existing building, as we move current staff over, we already have set up space for ten more seats, all ready to go with desks and phones and just after dropping a computer. Have plans to hire quite a few people coming up. Looking at future growth beyond that, you know, we moved into Dexter back in two thousand thirteen and thought we had more elbow room we knew what to do with. And at this point in time, about two years ago, we ran out of elbow room, so it's been very painful for the last two years. But we finally got to a point where, knock on wood, we're good for another ten years. Now, I hope in five years I'm coming back to you folks saying, hey, we need to expand again, but first things first. But with that, within our own existing building of the twenty thousand square feet, once again, we have current accommodations for ten more people. And we can expand some areas within the warehouse, expand some areas within a future expansion area to probably put in another fifteen people with built-in growth that just have to do some slight finishing of those areas. So anyways, we've really enjoyed being in Dexter, look to continue to be here for a number of years and once again, appreciate everybody taking into consideration for an I F E.
Thank you, Chris. Michelle, I see you got your hand up?
Thanks, Sean. I just want to make sure City Council received the corrected evaluation form, which I sent out this afternoon. Like Chris mentioned, Jamie identified a an error that was on the form. And thankfully, she asked the question before the meeting, so I could correct it and get it out to you. But excuse me, the time in community was listed as only having two point four points when they actually have been in the community cumulatively between the city and the school district two hundred and eighty-eight months. That allows them a total number of points of eleven point one, but there's a max cap there of ten. So that correction did increase the the number of years by one year. So instead of nine years, the they are eligible for ten. And I just want to make sure that council's aware of that if and when a motion is made.
Thanks, Michelle. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak tonight? I should remind you to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen if you can, if you're participating, or if you're dialed in on a cell phone, you can hit star nine to alert us that you want to speak.
Jennifer Olmstead was waving her hand.
Oh, Jennifer, welcome.
Yeah. Hi, good evening. I just wanted to speak to support the I F T for U I S. Spark works with a lot of different companies and we haven't been seeing people building new buildings. So this is a really great example of a new building and the fact that they were able to find a a new user to Dexter for their old building, I think, is a real great success story for the business park. So I just wanted to add that note. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks for joining us at the meeting and your work there. Justin, are you seeing any other hands?
I see Donna's, but I suspect there's a a motion behind that.
Yeah, I see that one, too.
Yep, that's true.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing then at six forty-two. So it went from six thirty-six to six forty-two and now, Donna, you can make a motion if you'd like to, please.
I would like to. I move we approve for a ten-year period, the I F T for U I S.
Okay. Cousins, more Cousins' second, thank you. Okay, council discussion? If necessary, Jamie?
Yeah, I think I just had a couple of questions. This is my first time reviewing one of these. Based on my read of it, my impression is that the approval is is sort of implied by their meeting of the criteria. Is that true? Or I'm not trying to suggest that I would not support this. I am just trying to better understand the general process. Would there be a reason to not approve? Would there be grounds to not approve it if they meet the criteria?
We have had some no votes on these in the past, Jamie. It allows council to decide whether we want to grant the exemption. You know, they have to apply for it. The the process with this form and such has been in place for as long as I can remember. You know, but there is an impact to so some might say there's an impact to other taxing authorities. You know, that that don't get to vote on this. They they are, they're subject to whatever we decide because we are the ones that grant the exemption. So it's not a done deal. There, I've always looked at it as they're creating some extra growth in the community. Sure, they if they would, they apply and get the exemption, they get a benefit for ten years, but, you know, then you get the other half of that benefit. If they didn't invest at all, there wouldn't be any exemption to give. So but there there has been some perspectives in the past that you know, we speak for multiple units of government, which is why that table is presented at the bottom of page forty-one that shows, you know, the impact on the different jurisdictions.
Right, right.
And and and, you know, my 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 glasses half-full perspective is that all of those entities are gonna get you know, the 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 first line, right, the amount of taxes during the I F T period. And ten years later, they're gonna get the additional estimated additional amount. So, but that, does that help a little?
It does, yeah. And then I don't know if this is an appropriate, if it, this is a question you can legally ask. I don't know why is it okay to ask the applicant how many jobs are held by residents of the city of Dexter?
Is that? You can ask that question, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would, that would just be a question of interest, I guess.
Yeah, you know, at this point in time, actually, one of the owners of the U I S is a resident of the city of Dexter. We have, I believe, three other employees that are at this point in time. Our company also belongs to the I B W, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, as a NICA contractor. And as such, our employees for the union positions that we have have to be hired out of Washington County or Jackson County. So definitely it pulls a lot of people in. I have a lot of people, handful of people working from Celine, driving to Dexter every day as well. So, yeah, so we do have quite a few people that come in. And just looking at our business for the most part, you know, we have about eighty employees. There's probably about sixty that are stationed out of our corporate office every day. The other fifty are folks that I hope they've ever run you off the road with one of orange and white vans, but I I get phone calls from folks on a regular basis and we're always in a hurry to save our clients in next emergency. So that's kind of where we're at, but but our our guys garage their vehicles at their house at night. And then they drive in in the morning, pick up supplies, go on to the job sites and so on. So so that's kind of our business model, Jamie.
Okay, thanks very much. That's helpful.
Yep.
Zach and then Paul?
Oh, yeah, I I didn't realize I put it up again, but thank you for for your efforts at billing this. Any sort of creation is always difficult. I do have some pointy questions, though, and I ask them, I think, from everybody who comes through here with this. By my math, the if this were approved, the Dexter Community Schools would lose roughly two hundred and ten thousand dollars over the ten-year period. Does U I S have any plans to make donations to the schools? Or whatever purpose the schools might need or use?
So what we do on a charitable donation standpoint is every year we give about twenty thousand dollars to charities. And it's a mixture of charities. The Dexter Community Schools has never been brought to our attention, but definitely we don't give it all to one charity. We try to mix it around a little bit. So I can definitely take that into consideration to provide some money back to the schools from our charitable fund that we give every year.
I would also bring up the library, too, because those are the the most entwined entities that would loss for this. And I think I ask this one always to of staff and applicants on page forty-eight, which is the building permit. It lists the estimated cost of construction at one point five million. And the math that we've got is the cost of the building was three point one million. So I guess my questions are, did Brower mess that up by by a magnitude of of a hundred percent? What what's the difference in there?
I can go ahead and take that question, Zach. Excuse me, and I I did address it in the in the report to you all. There is a reason that there is that difference, and it's not a, it's not an error by the contractor or the applicant. According to the Director of the County Building Department, the estimated cost of construction isn't isn't designed to take into account all costs of construction. Whereas the I F T or I F E application is all costs, everything. So for the building permit process, it's the cost of the major items. So things like site prep work, underground utilities, the building shell, those are the required, excuse me, the the cost for property acquisition, soft costs like architecture and engineering, and then all those interior build-out items, those do not go into the into the cost requested on your building application.
All right, thank you. And I will, thank you for including that in report. And I, just a heads up, I am going to ask that every time for folks who are here with public hearing, who will also be asking what the heck.
Not a problem. Happy to provide the information every time, Zach.
And Zach, I wish that the building did cost one point five million dollars.
Paul?
Well, I've struggled with this in the
Well, I've struggled with this in the, in the past. When we started the industrial park and these items would come up. Because about the time we got involved, that I was involved in building a restaurant. And during those, during the comparisons, you know, at times I had forty to fifty employees. And I got no tax break at all. There wasn't a state law that allowed me to have a tax break or unit, small businesses to have a small habitat. And so I struggled with that. Because to be quite honest, we employed a lot of people that were residents of Dexter or in a nearby area. So I struggled with that. In some case, I struggled a little bit more when my wife was appointed to the library board from the city council here. Because the library board is affected by every tax dollar that doesn't come into them as well. So it's not, it's just not a, an equal, equal wash that they get the benefit. There are some units of government, whether it's schools or a library or anything that you feel that could be there, could be other, other taxes, maybe a senior citizen tax sometime. It also would have been backed by this. So I just want you to know that it's not, it's not something that, that's just an easy, oh, yes, we'll do it. I, I look at UIS and, and see those, those orange and white trucks too. And I, I know that they're a good business and they, particularly as they relate to the, to the unions here and on Jackson Avenue there. So I, I, I want to support this one here. Sometimes I have to swallow a little bit harder, to be quite honest. But I'm willing to do that on this one here because I see a benefit for the community here in the long run. And that's what you have to look at. You can't look at it as just, whereas I described before. But Jamie, you're right, there are some other areas that people just say, oh, yes, that's automatic, we'll just do it. And it's okay. I, I hope we all think through it, how we vote and how we make the decision to make that vote.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any further council comments? Okay, just to clarify, we have a motion by Fisher, second by Cousins. And essentially, we're approving the resolution that's on page forty-three with the change from nine years to ten years consistent with the correction. Everybody understand that? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the exemption.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Good luck, Mr. Knight. Thank you for your time and your investment in the community. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you all very much. Greatly appreciate it. And, you know, we're looking forward to hopefully having an open house sometime later this summer when more and more people are vaccinated. And, and Michelle, our new training room and kitchen probably can accommodate fifty people very easily. And so if we ever have a Dexter business something again, I look forward to having everybody out to there.
Sounds like a plan. I'll hold you to that, Chris. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you much.
As well. Our second public hearing tonight relates to proposed tax amendments to the General Code of Ordinances, Chapter Thirty, Parks and Recreation, and Chapter Sixty-two, Trees. I'd like to open the public hearing at six fifty-three. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight related to this matter? If so, please raise your hand and or star nine on your cellphone. This one drew a lot of people, Michelle.
Do you want to give a little, little introduction, John?
Yeah, Justin, why don't you give a little introduction just to cover the public hearing, please? Thank you.
Sure, so, uh, late last year, early this year, we started talking about a potential merger of the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Tree Board. At this point this year, the Tree Board hasn't met. And they've only met a very limited number of times over the last couple of years. The, the concept is that the Parks and Recreation Commission meets on, on a monthly basis. And we don't typically have issues with filling that commission. While we have had issues with filling the tree board as far as vacant spots. The, the five members of the Tree Board, one of that, those members of staff and one of those members is a Parks and Recreation Commission representative. And currently, one of those members is, is either unable to participate or, or has not participated in, in recent meetings. And so by, by really transferring the responsibilities over to the Parks and Recreation Commission, we can have kind of a more consistent update and oversight of our tree maintenance program, including street trees, well, specifically street trees and other trees on, on public property. And so provided for your, provided for your consideration are amendments to the General Code of Ordinances to that effect.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak as part of the public hearing portion of this agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at six fifty-six. And would look for a motion from one of the council members if, if possible. Or if somebody wants to make a motion. Okay, so the motion is, as, as suggested on page fifty-four?
Correct.
Okay, motion by Fisher, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Griffin, thank you. Any discussion? I'm not seeing hands. Am I missing anybody? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Okay, Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
I think Paul stepped away.
Okay, just pass on him, please.
Okay, Kyo?
Yes, so I'm going to say motion carries five zero at this point. Paul was not available to vote, so item G is non-arranged participation. This is a first of two spots on the agenda for residents or anyone to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening on any topic? If so, you have five minutes. Cole, Justin, if you could recognize Cole, please, or call on Cole, or unmute calling him.
Hi, Cole Miller, seven, six, five, four, Forest Street, Dexter. Just a quick thing, under the consideration of the previously postponed vacant, vacating the alley and, and the Fourth Street. I was, it had just dawned on me, I was wondering if there was any consideration being paid to the city for this and whether this then, whether there was anything, any I that needed to be dotted or T that need to be crossed about complying with the charter amendment as per either the disposal or sale of property. And I know this is not a question and answer portion, so just, you know, for, for thinking when it comes up.
Okay, thank you, Cole. Other members of the public that may want to speak this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll keep going then. We have our meeting calendar as the, the lone communication in the packet on page fifty-nine. Any comments or updates by council on the meeting calendar? Zach?
Yep, I don't have the date right here because the calendar is in my phone and I'd have to switch through that. But the cap dart meeting, next one, it's past this, it's in May, the first Thursday in May. We are likely going to have the fellow who's in charge of the Regional Transit Authority, the RTA, speak with us. For those of you who don't remember or aren't aware, that's the kind of fuzzy entity that is looking at the regional authority for transportation for Washington, Wayne, Oakland, maybe Macomb County. We've had folks come out there before and it's been really nice. When it was last on the ballot, the RTA's plan was basically here are a bunch of rural areas and there's going to be some type of service. Because we've been able to discuss with them, we're, we're having a lot better success of shaping what type of service we want instead of them just kind of putting in something over there. So first Thursday is going to be virtual. If anyone has strong thoughts on transportation that they'd like to convey, either come participate, give me a shout, or then my ear and I'll include it at the meeting. That's all.
Thanks. So Zach, that'd be May sixth then, right? What, what time does that start again?
At seven, seven, thank you for repeating that. Okay.
Any other updates on our meeting calendar? Okay, our first report tonight is from our Public Services Superintendent. Welcome, Dan. Oh, you're on mute, or I think we've got a mute.
Good evening, everybody. I have a, a report in your packet and also I have some verbal updates. Want to start with the verbal updates or any questions on my report?
I'm happy to take questions on your report if there are some from folks. I, I have one small question, Dan.
Yep.
But I'll let Jamie go first. Your hands up.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Dan. I just wanted to say thank you on page sixty-two. I think you added some historic numbers for water use and things like that. I talked about being able to put those into better context, so thanks for adding that. And then there are also two fixes that DPW made at Community Park. And I just wanted to say thanks for that. I noticed those.
That's, that's still going to be work in progress. Trying to locate some of these pieces and parts. I talked to Kurt Forman, the Streets Department. It's not going to be impossible, but it's a little bit more difficult than you would think. So going forward, we're going to keep working to, to try to get things back up to where they need to be.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, that one spot with the loose rubber coating, yeah, I wasn't sure if you'd be able to replace it or not. But I think just even having it gone is better than having it the way it was. Because it was kind of a sharp, hard rubber on a climbing surface that didn't seem safe, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and to that point, yeah, Kurt is, is looking at, at trying to find that same piece to, for, for replacement. And, yeah, once, once, playground equipment is a couple of years out of date. It's almost like they just stopped manufacturing that, that part.
Right, right. Well, either way, I think it's an improvement.
You're welcome.
Dan, every year about this time, I, I ask the question about the debris that get washed down Mill Creek and get caught up on the, the connector over to West Side, or West Ridge there? Or Hudson Mills? I was wondering, when, when you talk to those folks, could you show them? There's a pretty big log that's upstream on Mill Creek that's on one of our rock vein weirs that keeps the water, supposed to have the water, direct the water into the center. There's a pretty big tree that's come down the creek. Okay. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to see if somebody could remove that before it. You know, that doesn't work well if it's clogged up, I guess is all I'm getting at.
No, not at all. Thank you for that. And I will, usually we have Alan J that helps us with that. So I will try to give them a call tomorrow and see what we can do.
Okay, appreciate your follow-up.
Or you could talk to the Beavers.
I'm going to leave there. Is there any other questions?
Just congratulations to Jacob. That's kind of a big deal to get that test passed.
Okay, yes, it is. I'm very, very happy. Well, I do have some updates on things that are ongoing and different items that we're doing. I'd like to start with the DBW. This week, we're going to try to get the culvert in the driveway in at the City Garden and follow up with putting some millings down for the actual parking up there. The last thing we're going to do up there is run the water lines. So that's going to be an ongoing project. Hopefully, we can get done in the next three to four weeks. Kurt let me and Justin know late last week that he has to get orthoscopic knee surgery at the end of this month. The surgery date is going to be the twenty-ninth. He's going to be out for approximately four weeks. So talking to Justin, I'm going to try to give one of the, the water guys that we had that has fifteen years' experience with the DPW, try to free him up to help. Because that'll put us down to three people down at the Department of Public Works. Also, I will dedicate some of my time like I did when we were doing the split shifts with COVID and we didn't have Jacob working at the DPW on the days that Todd can't, Todd can't help them. Obviously, with a DPW, as time rolls on here, it gets busier and busier and busier. So, or I'm hoping, me and Justin are hoping with my help and Todd's, we can keep everything rolling to the best of our ability till we, Kurt back. He told me and Justin it would be about a month. He thinks he's going to be off of work. Any question?
Please wish him well with that.
I'll let him know. We started flushing hydrants. I'm on water now last week. Right now, we're in Dexter Crossings and here on Farms, we started flushing hydrants. So hopefully by the Thursday or the end of this week, we'll be out at Dexter Crossings and here on Farms. And we'll be in the, what I call the old part of town, starting late this week, early next week. We finished the drinking water quality report. That's also in the packet. That, that's finished. We're still working on our emergency response plan for the water and wastewater. We try to update this every year with the different contractors, the state agencies, the different things, just to keep everything current in case something happens. We're also working on a pollution incident prevention plan for the water and wastewater. That's got to do a lot with our chemicals down here that we store. We have to put a plan into the state and update that. If we change any chemicals or do anything different, just to ensure that we've got containment. And we're going to keep everything stored safely at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions on anything?
Look through. Oh, Paul's got his hand up, I think.
Yeah, Dan, it's, it's never a good time for anybody to have to have their, their knee surgery. But I guess the question I have is that with the addition of the, of the water lines, the millings and the culvert there, are we still doing the plans for having additional plowing and rototilling and putting up the fence there? I mean, it's going to be pretty short.
We're trying, we're trying, yep. And we will get it, we will get it done one way or another. If it comes with Kurt being gone now that it doesn't look like we're going to have time, then I'll have to come back to council. And obviously, Justin first and say, we need to hire some of this stuff out, but we're going to try to do it ourselves. And we will have it done by May first. I think that's when the opening of the, of the, or try to, by the opening of the garden. Is that correct?
I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I think it's usually mid, it's usually mid-May.
Okay, all right.
And, and the rotary could help out if they know dates and generally weekends are always the best on Saturdays, so.
I mean, this obviously threw a little bit of twist when we only got four people at the DPW to get this done. So I haven't really had a lot of time to think other than trying to get the day-to-day stuff done. But obviously, if you don't have time, this is really important to our, to get this.
I understand completely. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dan? Donna?
Yeah, Dan, I just had a thought. Would it be helpful to you to hire your summer help early? One of the kids that had had experience before, could you bring them back or something like that? Just tossing the idea. Don't have to answer me, but.
Well, we, we have had out for a while looking for summer help. I think Justin could help me here. I think we got one application and don't have any kids coming back.
Okay, okay, okay.
We're not really sure how the summer help is going to work, you know, how it's going to work this year.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, if anybody knows any eighteen-year-olds or, you know, college students who are, are home on vacation, let, let, let us know.
I contacted the school, Kurt's contacted the school. I have also talked to the police officer that's at the school because he has a, his son is, I think, a junior or senior this year. So we're putting out as much as, you know, the feelers we can. But, yeah, we need, we're going to need some help.
Okay. Well, we're going to turn the council into a recruiting mode.
Yeah. I would appreciate it because we're doing everything. I would appreciate it because we're doing everything we can. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for all you're doing and your team's out doing. Okay, last chance questions for Dan. We'll move on to. Michelle Anya, our community development manager is up next.
Thank you, Sean. Excuse me. You've got my report in your packet. And before I go into updates, and I do have a few of them, do you have any questions for me?
Jamie?
Yep, thanks, Michelle. I appreciated all the details from the public hearings that. So the quasi-public hearings, I guess, the public hearings that are going to happen again. And so I noticed that there were a number of people expressing concerns about the potential of a self-storage facility being over there on Second Street. I guess, I don't know if any of those people are online, but I would encourage them to reach out to council members or other staff to share. More specifics about their concerns. I don't know if they've had any additional conversation with city staff that you can share. It seems like traffic and lighting might have been concerns. So I know if you want to comment more on, on that generally. And then. I think my second question in the update about the ADUs, I know in the past, the planning commission had talked about. Some sort of public engagement. I don't know if there was any additional, if there's going to be anything beyond the public hearing that's scheduled, I think, in the beginning of May. If you could provide any update about that.
So, excuse me. No, there's, at this time, Planning Commission did not feel that anything else, anything in addition to the public hearing was needed. Other than the guide that has been put together. And that will be shared widely. So that the community is fully aware of why we're going this route, why the decision's been made. Planning Commission is still interested in feedback from people. What they didn't want to do. Based on how people are generally reluctant to change was go out to the general public and say. How do you feel about this? Do you think we should do it? Kind of thing. So that's why we're going in this direction. Excuse me. As you know, we have not set a public hearing date yet. I suspect the public hearing may be in June. So that will give us plenty of time to finalize the, the guide to ADUs. And get it widely distributed so people can give feedback and attend that public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle? Okay. Did you have a question, Sean?
Yeah, can I follow up on the, the self-storage facility text amendment?
Sure.
Has, you know, in, in reading some of the comments here. One of the comments that was made by the. Here is that Second Street is not a residential neighborhood. It's a mixed-use corridor. And. While I understand that the. The comment that's made there. Street is a very residential area.
There are sections of it that are residential, but I don't think the comment was made as a. In a, in a fashion that should be taken as derogatory. I think the point that was being made was. There are and continue to be uses that are not residential. And those areas where that happens, we have to remember that there is this mix.
Yes. Yeah. I, I, I guess my, the, I, what I, what I don't see here. Anywhere is anybody commenting on whether or not they want it to be more. Residential. I mean, we've talked about Edison Street and the park that's there. That building or that property. While I know it's not in its old traditional use as a printing business or manufacturing printing business. You know, it's sort of the bookend of that mixed-use portion of the corridor. And if you, if the long-term goal was to, to try to transition it to residential. Certainly putting something else there that has a long-term use is not going to make that change happen. I, I personally could see with the proximity to the border, border trail and. You know, the old neighborhood there, uh, some type of continuation of residential along that area. And it might draw even more people towards that park and that part of our. Of our city. So I don't know if, I don't know. Personally, I don't know if self-storage is a good. Good reuse of that from my perspective. I, I'd like to see it go a different direction. I know that might mean we have to. Wait for another opportunity, but I'd, I'd like to ask the planning commission if they talked about or to talk about it as a residential opportunity. Maybe we don't have our master plan quite right.
So let me, I see your hand up, Donna. Let me answer Sean's and then I can take care of yours. So you may recall a few years back before we started the master plan update. AR Brower did present a question. To staff which was. Submitted to the planning commission and ultimately information provided to council through staff reports. That ask if, how the city would feel about a. Reuse of that property for a multiple family. At the time. Excuse me, our master plan. Would not have allowed that. But. Notwithstanding that. We had significant discussion at the planning commission that the city being a built-out community. Had limited areas to add industrial. And so to remove industrial. Designations or property from industrial designation. Could, would have an impact on revenue. And so consider it very carefully. The planning commission. In speaking. With Brower at that point. Did not feel changing to residential or that type of intense residential use was the right thing to do. We then went through the master plan update and you will recall that one of the things. That's identified as a, an action item is to do. A, a study of the Second Street corridor, not just from the streetscape perspective of design. But as to include things like what's, what are the type, the proper types of uses going forward? And so currently, right now, it, it's master plan still industrial. But it's, it's R and D industrial, not the general. The zoning right now is still the current zoning, which is. The limited industrial. But as we update the zoning ordinance, that would get changed to the R and D. Excuse me. Those kinds of things do come into play as we consider this particular site. And, and, and the applicant does have, he does have some challenges. Those were pointed out in the staff's report, the consultant's reports. As well as expressed within the residents' concerns. We do have, and this was going to be part of my verbal update. We do have, excuse me, we do have a meeting on-site with the applicant, which the applicant has requested. To. Go over. Have a better understanding of what needs to be done on-site to the building. In order to, what's the best word again? Make the residents or give that, give the residents the level of comfort that they deserve. And the planning commission, the level of comfort that they have to have if they're going to take affirmative action. Excuse me. The, one of the glaring. Faults, if you will, with the application was. There was significant demonstration of the improvements that would be done inside the building. And as one of the planning commissioners pointed out, that's where you're going to make your money. But there was no real. Demonstration of the investment in the property or the building on the outside to show. What the applicant was doing so that it, the use being proposed would be compatible. With the, with the residential area in which it's located. So a couple of things that did come out were from the meeting. A planning commission wants the loading area relocated to the rear. Although they did not take action. The impression I got was very strong that if the applicant is not willing to do something that's significant. His, his project could be in jeopardy. Same with the trash receptacle being relocating it to the rear, making it so the use of the property. You're not seeing that intensity on Edison Street and not visible from the residential area. Lands, something as small as providing some landscaping, although they don't and are not required by code. To bring the site up to code for landscaping, having some investment that would make the site look nicer. Would go a long way. And then more definitive information regarding any lighting improvements. And some of the other smaller points that were made.
Michelle, thanks. You, you're, you're into the weeds more. I'm on a bigger picture. Suggestion of, of conversation that I was just wondering if it could happen. So Donna?
I, I knew exactly what you meant, Sean. That's why I gave the detail. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
A couple of concerns that I have heard is two points that really stick out to me is that. Twenty-four hour access and, yeah, and lighting are the two. So I'll just pass that along to you, Michelle.
Yes, Planning Commission, when they. Determine that a self-storage is compatible in an industrial district, not this specific site, but in the district. There were three conditions that will go along with part of their consideration. And it's baked into the text amendment. One is the hazardous material, storage, et cetera. Other was the ability to limit the hours of operation and. Mike, do you remember what that third one was? It's escaping me. There's a third one, but needless to say, Planning Commission also made it very clear, and thank you for bringing it up, Donna, that they would. Exercise their right to limit the hours of operation.
Okay.
And we've had, had substantial discussion since the meeting with the applicant's engineer. Who's working on their, that client, their client's behalf and let them know that's the first hurdle. If that is not acceptable. Then their client needs to make that determination now. Because everything else is just icing on the cake, so to speak.
Thanks.
Zach?
Yep, I will speak, having. Experienced in the community with a lot of miniature and self-storage when I was in Indiana. If it's away from a bunch of other things, specifically residential uses. It's relatively easy to manage and in high demand. As soon as it gets close to residential, especially established neighborhoods, it can go sideways very fast. The big concerns that I have heard, and in fact, I heard one of these at a community I was at last week. With one that had just been approved is the hours of access. And the traffic generated, and that can vary depending on the type of miniature storage. The place I specifically heard complaints about this past week was supposed to be hours limited. With card control access, but it isn't. And the neighbors are not so happy about that. The traffic generates noise, especially if there's outdoor storage or outdoor access. You know, people will leave their car radios on while they're loading and unloading and they don't really care about it. But that'll carry and light. So if this is going to be. Any mini-storage that's anywhere close to residential requires a lot of attention to do it without causing. Negative externalities on the existing neighborhood. That's all.
Thanks, Zach. Jamie?
Yeah, I just had one more question. So we are, you know, directly behind our house is the business park. And I'm trying to look up on a map. I don't even know the name of the company. That's furthest. South, so south of Case Base. I don't know the name of that. Anyway.
Dex Tech.
Yeah, Dex Tech. Okay, so I think they run three shifts. I guess I'm, I don't know what the zoning is on that. I don't know. I mean, there's not traffic that's coming down our street, but. You know, we have twenty-four hour noise coming from that business, including their outdoor intercoms and things like that. So. I understand people's concerns. I wouldn't. I would just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, I guess, is being equitable to different businesses, given that they're in a similar zoning district, and I don't know that they are. But I, I can appreciate that. I mean, when we moved here, we knew we were adjacent to the business park, so we at least had that going into it. This would be something new. So people want to maybe have expected it. But I guess. I don't, you know, immediately find the concerns compelling, but I'm happy to continue to consider them.
Paul, I saw you waving your pencil.
Yeah. When we were in the first throes of determining the horseshoe park. Now, now First Street Park. There was. Quite a bit of conversation about what we own and what the property owner there owned behind the building. And there was, our space is fairly limited there. It curls around as a track of the train. Their train track curls and so it's not a square spot. It's more of a rectangular spot. But there was much discussion about evidence that when there was a different buil- business in there. That they literally dumped gallons. Of contaminants and oil out the back door. And that it. Eventually seeped into some of our property. And that may have been one of the reasons that we never used it. I don't know. That goes back along, but there is history that that property there. When I heard the word, oh, you know, just relocate the, the. Loading dock and the other to that, that may be totally impossible. You may be trying to take out dirt there for. Years before you get down to something solid there. And what it would, what the contaminants, I have no idea, but. Oil was one of them and they didn't bother it. About taking care of it then. And I assume it's still there. I know it's never been cleaned up since we had the, the park there, but. Bob Stacy would be a perfect person to ask that question to because he was the one that brought it to our attention when we were there. And I think Kurt was as well when he. Helped us clean that space up out there. So, you know, I'm not taking a position on this one or the other. I just know that there are some significant issues with that piece of property. And. That always goes along with then, what, well, what can you put there? And you remember that if you own that property and you bought it or you inherited that property. You'd probably want to sell it to some, for some price someday. And we put too many restrictions on it. You know, then, then you really run, run this, follow a lot of things, suits and everything that you don't want anything there. So let's. Be very careful as we proceed with this cautiously, optimistically, but also. With due diligence on all the things that could be there.
Thanks, Paul. I do know that the perspective, the applicant, who's the prospective purchaser of the property. Has done his due diligence and done, excuse me, at least a phase one. And a phase two. So he is very well aware of what issues there are with that property and that building.
Oh, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll do one and then Mike?
Um, thanks. I guess I just wanted to follow up quickly on. Jamie's comments. I just want to clarify for you that. The, a lot of what the neighbors were bringing to our attention was about the unpredictability. Was about the unpredictability of the traffic. They had, most of them had lived there when it there was. Operational, I should say, some of them, and they, you know, they were very used to that type of use. And so they they just had concerns about the change from that because. Um just because of the unpredictable nature of it, as opposed to something that they could count on.
Thank you. Mike?
There's a quick point of reference. That third condition in the text amendment is that no outdoor storage or activity would be permitted. It would all need to be in a building.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, still your report. Uh Michelle?
Okay, if there are no other questions, then I'm going to start with the verbal updates. Excuse me. So um um posted on Friends of Dexter today. The owner of the People Sculpture, also known as La Raza. Um that's the one on Baker Road where you see that. Um that it used to be all painted white and now they're multiple colors. Um that property owner has um had the statues, the sculpture removed due to its deteriorating condition. It generates a lot of um buzz on social media and he just wanted everybody in the community to be aware. The DDA at their last meeting um um voted to pick up. Half of the costs for barricades for on-street parking going forward this year. Um I don't know if that's something that Sean, you wanted counsel to speak on at some point. Um um but if you've got any questions, the information is in my report. I just, it was in the last report. I just want to make sure that it doesn't um um get bypassed in case it's something you all want to address.
You mean to prevent on-stream parking, barricades to prevent on-street parking?
Um yeah, the barricade so that um the the restaurants can expand into the the parking spaces on Main Street again this year.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, the the I think the the question that council needs to answer is um. Whether or not we want to share with the DDA the cost of those barricades again for the year, similar to last year.
Yes.
The the DDA voted to participate again so that it would not be a business owner cost. Um you'll recall that the more recent, uh what do we call it, outdoor. Language that we approved a couple of meetings ago, our last meeting, you know, would would put that burden directly on the the business to pay for that. Uh the DDA felt that, given that the COVID year was still ongoing this year, that the DDA and city. If the city's willing, could split that cost one more time for people that requested to make that happen. So. If the if council is willing to do that, we probably need a motion to. To let staff know that we support that cost. And what was it last year? Michelle, it was like?
The total cost from July first to November thirtieth was a little over five thousand dollars. For this year, it will be May first through November thirtieth. So there's two additional months. Um which would probably take it up to um. I think that Mike Fitzpatrick had calculated it was closer to eight thousand dollars. And the DDA would pick up half of that.
Okay, so I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any support to do that at this time.
Okay, so the the the.
I'm I'm personally in favor of doing that, just so everybody knows. I think we should help that out one more year, but um.
Well, I.
I don't I don't get to make, I don't get to make a motion.
I, you know, I, if you need a motion, I'll make a motion. I just thought it was common sense and we're gonna do it again. So. I just thought we're gonna do it, so I didn't bother even put my hand up, so. Well, just. Motion, I'll be glad, I'll be glad to make a motion. The council picks up the other half if the DDA can't figure out a way to 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 uh pay for all of it.
Okay, motion by Cousins. Thank you for not to exceed half of it.
Yeah.
I'll support that, but does this mean we're giving permission to be in the street again, or is that just, that's built into this? Or I can't remember what we did to get them out in the street last year. That's where I need the help.
Last year you did um um back to back and then a third emergency ordinance. We've amended the zoning ordinance to make outdoor service areas an administrative. Uh review and approval process.
Okay.
And so it'll come through um my office, um but the barricades are something that um they'd have to pay for.
Yep, thank you. I'll support Paul's motion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So motion by Cousins, second by Fisher. Can we have additional discussion on that if needed? Please? Okay, Ms. Jones, can you call the vote on that question or that motion, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you call me?
Yeah, Fisher.
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Uh could the chair repeat what the not to exceed is, please, before I vote?
I think it's not to exceed half of eight thousand.
All right. Uh yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you for that.
Okay, moving on, excuse me. Um we've, we've, we've had an abundance of enforcement activity um over the last couple of weeks. Excuse me, um last week, there was a contractor that did work in the Edison Street right-of-way without getting a permit. And um um this is a habitual um um offender. When it comes to working in the right-of-way and as um circumstances. Uh played out, we ended up having to uh contact the sheriff to issue a ticket. Um, excuse me, um. We're still trying to get this resolved. The um contractor um has repaired the street. Um but again, still is not um been issued a permit because he has not uh provided the information. That's required for issuing a permit. Um um things like this are become liability risks for the city. So um myself, Mike. Uh Dan and Justin are uh working to figure out um how we can uh. Get this habitual offender to properly follow the rules. Um and we'll keep you updated. Uh there is a stop-work order that's been posted on eight-one-one-eight Main Street. That is the building where the uh former family barber and Ruby's Maker he was. Um, excuse me, that uh property owner is doing and has been doing. Um interior remodeling without a permit. The county started an enforcement activity back in December that we were not aware of. Um we became uh aware of it uh within the last two weeks uh through the fire department. And so we've um uh we tried reaching out to the landlord. Um he uh does not want to cooperate, and so um the stop-work order has been placed. And we'll continue to monitor that and keep you up to date. The last um, the last one was uh unfortunately having to um. Uh threaten a stop-work order on the eighty-nine-three, eighty-nine-nine project again. Um.
I remind you what it is.
Uh eighty-nine-three, eighty-nine-nine Main Street. That's the renovation happening um with the former Red Brick Properties.
Okay, thank you.
Um again, contractors working in the right-of-way without following. This time, the contract, the contractor doing uh the overall redevelopment. Was issued a permit with very specific conditions and chose not to put those conditions into play. Or satisfy the conditions of approval. Um whenever there's work in the right-of-way, especially on something like Main Street, where you've got construction activity. And the public walking along, you want to make sure that um um. There's clear separation to protect the public, but also protect that property owner that's having that work done. Um thankfully, the, there has not been any more additional work in the right-of-way. Um my understanding is that the um uh the the barricade is supposed to be being put up. The plywood's supposed to be put down on the bricks to protect them. And um there won't be the heavy equipment on the Broad Street walkway. So I've got my fingers crossed. Let's hope. Um I don't have to go farther with that. We have two, we've issued two outdoor seating permits. Um uh one will be within parking spaces in front of the Beer Grotto and Painted Trout. And the other one was for Erratic Gales. We also have one application that's currently under review for the Dexter Pub. Um but there are a few issues with the application, and we continue to try and work with the applicant to get those resolved. Let's see, where am I at? Actually, I think that's it. I've given you all my updates now.
Uh Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, um Beer Grotto, it is going to be in front of Painted Trout and their own building?
Yes, ma'am. Uh they did contract, paint, contact Lauren at Painted Trout. And Lauren submitted an email uh indicating her support for giving up those uh parking spaces in front of her store.
So everyone on the both sides of the street decide to help each other, and what happens to your downtown parking?
The only uh businesses that are eligible are um Riverview Cafe, Dexter's Pub. Um uh Beer Grotto, uh Dexter Creamery is eligible, but they. Um Chris Jones has indicated he does not want to take away the parking. Um so it's not going to be anybody more than what you had last year. So we won't lose all the parking on Main Street.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh Zach?
Uh yep, um I think one of the things we ought to have discussion in this, I'm just. Throwing the seed out there is uh when folks use public. Space for construction, that there is a cost to the community and folks who aren't able to use it. And we ought to look at that more seriously, including charging deposits, escrow, whatever, so that. Um if they, you bonk up and they destroy all the sidewalks or all the bricks. We are able to repair it, and if they violate the terms, we can yank that from them. Um that's usually a pretty quick hammer. Let's see, oh, the, if someone gets a chance, the last time I was out there, the the outdoor spacing, the fence for Aubries in the south. Uh Easterly corner seemed like it was awfully tight uh for the five feet, and someone who was in a wheelchair or. Might have mobility, mobility issues, could have challenges there. Um I do have one other habitual offender question for you. I get questions on this from folks all the time. The unloading of vehicles from the car trucks uh by La Fontaine. Have you heard any more about that? Are they still doing it? I've, I've heard from some folks out there. We got them the number for, the non-emergency number for the Sheriff's Department. Uh they said the response has been spotty on that, um probably not manned during all hours.
So you you can, um I have been watching it very carefully. There has not been another complaint, nor have I seen them um uh unloading the vehicles either from Ryan Drive. Or Dexter and Arbor Road. Um if by any chance um. Uh you or any residents should see it, they should call the emergency number, not the non-emergency number.
I'll pass that along, thank you. It it has been very frustrating for the residents. For those of you who don't get over there. They had been parking right in the center of the road on Dexter and Arbor or in the bike lane. Or some combination of that on Ryan Drive while they're unloading vehicles.
I made it um uh very clear and and I will say La Fontaine um management has been um. Um very receptive. A part of the difficulty is um when the uh truck drivers would come to. Drop off, they would just start and um La Fontaine, by the time they realized what was happening. Um felt that maybe it was just better to get it done and over with. And what I told them was that it, I personally don't care. When they see that this is happening. Once they become aware of it, they need to tell that truck driver to. Pack it up and pull into the parking lot. Yes, it's going to take some time, but um. Um otherwise, they're on the hook for this and they don't want to be on the hook for it. So.
Thanks, Zach. Any other questions for Michelle? Okay, uh Justin, you are up next under City Manager Report.
Sure, so um we took the uh spring newsletter over to the post office on Friday. So if you haven't received it already, it should be uh hitting doors here pretty quickly. Um I had a walkthrough of thirty-five fifteen Broad Street again today. Uh with our IT vendor and with partners in architecture um as a, as a follow-up. Um walkthrough. Um I have, we we have started updating uh the, we're uploading the Zoom meetings to YouTube. Um it's a bit of a slow process, but um hopefully they should be uploaded here to the website uh the next week or two. Um I was just notified that our intern Rebecca uh is going to be leaving us at the end of the month. Um she's done a great job for us, even though she's been working from home. Um she's been very, very good about working on on projects that we assign her, and she will be missed. Um we will be interviewing for uh the farmer's market manager position. Um we received a couple of applications, so I'll be sitting down with those applicants here shortly. Um I did meet with um a representative of Verizon and a third-party uh security camera vendor that they work with. Um just to start exploring um possible options for security cameras in our parks. Um because uh within the last few weeks, um we've had another temporary sculpture vandalized. Um and there was um some significant graffiti that took place um along the border-to-border trail uh north of West Ridge. Um and while we may not be able to to catch that um between the the sculptures that were vandalized um late last year. Plus the new sculpture that was vandalized just recently and some of the graffiti that we've seen. Um you know, we 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 want that to come to an end, and unfortunately, you know, we can't, can't be in the parks twenty-four seven. Um but may maybe there are some options to to keep an eye without, without actually being present.
You tell us what sculpture it was?
Uh so it was the rusted spider sculpture uh over near the library.
Thank you.
Um it looked like somebody had had kicked a hole in it, which, which is sad. Um we, we did receive uh in your packet, you have um the the list of two applicants that we've received so far for the vacant. Uh city council position. Um we did receive a third application from Rich Ballas. Um and that will close on the, on Friday, I believe it's the sixteenth. Um the Easter egg hunt has also ended. Uh we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about um. The the style that we did uh for this year. Um a lot of the folks coming up uh getting their prizes indicated that they actually liked uh this, this year's style over previous years. Um kind of the Easter egg scramble that we did in in Community Park. Um so we've received a lot of good feedback on that. Um and then uh we've proposed a couple of dates for uh city council budget work sessions. Um Wednesday, April twenty-first, uh Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, and then a Wednesday in May. Um I don't know if any members of city council had any thoughts on any of those dates.
And what's the date in May?
Uh it was.
The twelfth?
Thank you.
May twelfth.
I'm not seeing any hands. Everybody looking okay at those dates or thinking, if if you can't make those dates, please get back to. Justin on that. We're trying to set those dates so we can, you know, go through our normal review of the budget together. Jamie?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So those meetings are more pointed or specific um as compared to our other more general topic discussions about the budget? These are more like line items or things like that?
Yeah, the this is our first look at a line item by line item budget, Jamie. It'll give all the detail behind what numbers are in each category and how the how Justin calculated or how they estimated it and.
Okay.
Um yeah, so so we'll probably start off with with general fund on the twenty-first. Uh I'll provide a report of um items included, um items uh proposed but excluded. Um and then some of the big projects coming up that fit within the general fund budget.
Are those usually longer than an hour?
Uh yes. Typically like six to eight, Jamie.
Okay, I just meant I didn't know if it's something you could like bump to in advance of our regular council meeting, but it sounds like probably not, so.
I would.
I'm available those days.
Okay, I would say I would say we can, you know, an hour. I would say we need an hour and a half for sure, but typically I think we try to be done within a two-hour period.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we 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 try and be be pretty pretty prompt and and get get through conversation pretty quick. Um and that's all I got for you. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh Jamie?
Yep, I did. I two comments. You mentioned on page eighty-one, the park use permits. Um and then Seth's having a discussion with Parks and Recreation Commission about, you know, updating the permit. I just want to make sure everybody saw that and I don't I don't know like which order it would go if, you know, Parks and Rec has final saying what goes on this permit or if council does, but given that one making decisions about um permitting different events, I think if anybody has input to share related to what they would like to see on a permit, it's, I don't know in terms of the timing, if it's something we share with Parks and Rec in advance of them considering it or if it's something we're still able to consider after Parks and Rec has a discussion. Um I it just seems to me that based on decisions we've made uh recently, I think people on council likely have thoughts about what they would like to see on it. And then the only other comment I have, I think was on page eighty, it's in the water quality report. Um which I guess was a good a good report. Um yeah, on the bottom, just on page eighty-nine and the last paragraph before message from the EPA where it begins each year, so right under that table. I don't know if you if you're there. Each year we constantly take water samples. It's a minor point. I just thought the word constantly could be changed to something that's more accurate and specific. So somebody might know like, well, how often are we doing this? Are we doing it quarterly? Are we doing it weekly? Is it daily? Um.
And so and 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 Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think at this point um it it was sent over to Eagle. And Eagle has given their their blessing over it, so I I don't know how much um wiggle room we have to to change uh the the tax after after Eagles. Um taking a look and and giving and giving their blessing on it.
Okay, just in the in the future, I thought could be more specific.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, any questions for Justin? Um okay, I'll move on to my report. Uh Justin, thanks for covering the budget meetings.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh the city manager search committee has met uh three times over the last couple of weeks. We met on April second to um narrow the field from forty-one down to uh ideally eight candidates. Uh we asked our finance director, treasurer, and re-sharey to contact those eight and to try and schedule a first round of interviews. Um two of the people that we had listed uh have taken jobs at other locations since the applications were turned in. So we uh we interviewed six people on April seventh, five on April seventh, and one on the morning of April ninth, which was my alternate date there that I had uh listed at the time that I wrote this. Um and we are meeting this Wednesday to talk about how to narrow the the six candidates down to two or three. Uh I will be sending an email out to um the other three council members to let you know what number of candidate. Again, we're not issuing names at this point in time, but to issue what numbers we are we are considering in case you want to look at those applications a little closer, more closely and provide any feedback. Um the thought is, once we get down to two or three, um everybody's that we interviewed agreed that their name could become public and we could schedule some public meetings to uh do further interviews as a as a a full board so that everybody could could meet them. Um I would like to say that there are some excellent candidates uh out there and we made some progress this past period, so wanted to keep that in front of everyone. Um Justin mentioned the newsletter and uh the State of the City address. I tried to talk about a variety of things in there. If anybody has any questions on anything, happy to answer those um at any time. Uh wanted to talk a little bit about the protective fencing in the park. Uh this came up just after our last meeting, which seems like forever ago, three weeks ago. But uh the the activity of uh presumably the beavers that live across Mill Creek um has started to threaten our our vegetation. Uh Paul Evanoff, who's the landscape architect that designed the park and his firm did the design of the vegetation, came up with um what I think is some pretty good decorative fencing and um he uh and to help him get it in the ground there. Uh hopefully it looks okay to everybody. The the goal uh is not was not to uh, you know, completely fence in the park. Um you know, wildlife and animals are part of the natural design that we've created. If the beavers or the muskrats or whatever it is come up on shore, um you know, we didn't, we didn't fence it so they couldn't come up on shore, or we did fence it so that they tried to keep to keep them out of the the natural areas. Uh you know, I don't know how fast or how much continued uh damage they're going to be able to cause. Um if you if you go up even as high on the banks as by the amphitheater, you could see evidence of uh bark off of some of the vegetation there. That's quite a ways away from Mill Creek. Um obviously, we can't fence off the world, so uh my dad used to tell a story about uh I grew up on an acre lot and we had all sorts of wildlife animals and such in our in the woods that were in front of our home. But the minute the groundhog got under the front porch or under the back deck, um my dad would say alternate strategies were were needed to be put in place because he didn't want them living that close. I don't know what this board's tolerance is towards. Um you know, maybe some trapping from time to time. Uh trapping's not a popular topic. Um you you cannot trap and relocate a beaver. You they are a nuisance animal and they will cause problems if you relocate them to someplace else. So that the trapping that we might have to consider if they become a problem would would be, you know, lethal. Uh I'm not advocating that we necessarily do that, but we should be mindful that there is only a certain approvable season for that type of activity. Uh I think Justin told me or it was in the Parks Report that it's essentially November through April twenty-third. Uh so it's during the winter um leading up to when beavers typically have their kids, which is typically April, May, if I understand it. So I don't know, this is maybe a learning year. Uh we've done, we've taken the first preventative route. I did reach out to Rebecca Rebecca Eshelman at here River Waterhead Council and left her a voicemail last week. I have not heard back from her yet on whether or not there are any strategies that are being imposed across the watershed, but um I anticipate this may be a topic we have to uh uh you know, talk about in the future. Um with any luck, maybe they'll they'll run upstream and leave our park alone. But um Donna, I see you have your hand up. I just wanted to touch on it and uh make sure it's out there, so for everybody to hear. Donna?
Uh yeah, at the risk of everybody laughing here and me feeling a little foolish, how many beavers are we talking about? I mean, how many beavers in a colony or how does that all work?
Well, it depends if the reading I've done on them is that they go in groupings of five to eight and that they keep their that they keep their young somewhere between two and two and a half years before the the kids move on to find their own home. So I mean, you know, we don't have them punching in to know how many are there.
I too.
I walked over to the the area that uh on the other side of the creek there a couple of times and when the water level was was higher up there, I I thought I could see something swimming out beyond the um Canadian geese that's nesting over there, but it's hard to tell what it was. It could have been a muskrat, it just as easy as it was a beaver. I, you know.
There are three dams um up that way and um beavers have have taken also taken residence in Sloan Reserve. And um we think that that's probably where our family came from.
Hmm. Uh Paul, I see your hand waving.
Yeah, well, I uh when I got the uh the note and then made a mistake by responding to it, I I I just uh know that you can't you you can't really trap beavers uh alive. That's unfortunate. Uh I had only just a limited experience with that when my father used to do it up north with a friend of his, so uh that's, you know, the 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 goal was never to relocate the beavers or it was the to get the the fur or to deflesh or whatever happens and that from there on, but I I just fear that um that uh when we bring this out publicly, that we're going to have as many people objecting to um the treatment of the beavers uh as the problems we have right now, but maybe not, we'll see. But this started about almost eight years ago now, as I remember being on Washington Castle when the beavers were made a colony up uh right off of uh Zeb Road there where the new uh landing was there for the cars and stuff to walk down along the river there and somebody knows, hey, you know what, there's a bunch of ships here, they're beaver ships, so they were uh they they were up there then. Now, whether they move, but they do move back and forth all the time. And so um I support a hundred percent the uh screening of anything we can do to help screen them in. But um um it's really difficult to get rid of, to be quite honest, okay? And I don't, I haven't, I haven't been down there by the uh by the amphitheater to see there, but uh they're they're tough to get rid of, they really are. I did those, Sean, the minute I heard about that, I contacted Rebecca Esselman and she was supposed to get back to me with some information too, so between the two of us, I'm sure she'll get back to us something. Um I think uh I told her that we'd like to information as quick as possible, so uh they 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 have issues too. Uh and and most of the time it's not a big issue because it's out a little bit further in a wild area and not not where a park is. Uh that's that's our dilemma right now. We have cleared our park, we spent, as Sean mentioned, and as we spent a lot of money on the on the shrubbery and all our trees and um there's going to be have to be a way to try to solve that, maybe with additional uh you know, protection without trying to kill the beavers. I just, I I just know it's not easy. It's really not easy to get rid of.
Well, like I said, I think we've been proactive to a point and, you know, I'm I'm happy with the way the it looks. It, you know, anytime somebody, when Paul first mentioned putting up fencing, you think, geez, what's fencing going to look like, but
Yeah, right.
he's he's done it in a in a way that's that blends into the the vegetation, it's used green posts and green netting and and the chicken wire you unless you're right on top of it, you don't really see it from afar away and
I think they did a good job with that. I agree with a hundred percent.
Yeah, so I think we'd give that a try, but I just wanted to be upfront about it because I've had a lot of questions in the park as we were doing some of the work, so. Um Zach, sorry, I didn't didn't mean to exclude your hand. Please jump in.
I'll I'll just throw mine in there. So I I spent four years working for Seaview Mount Pleasant Parks and those are familiar with their park system. It runs along the Tuba River. And now and then we would get beavers, uh much more drunk college students canoeing than beavers, um which may be a good management technique there, uh but they can do a lot of work um at taking down trees in a very quick period. Uh personally, I would prefer to find management techniques that allow beaver population to remain in place. I know it's a lot of effort, but it's a wonderful sign of the health of the river and it provides an opportunity for folks to see things that they wouldn't normally see just walking out out the door. Um and if we move them, well, kill them, other beavers are just going to come to their place, so um it's something that unfortunately, because of the success of the management of the watershed in this creek, uh it's welcoming to the beavers and they're going to be here. So I think we ought to figure out how we can live with them.
Thank you, sir. I I know I can see evidence of their existence up along the path to Hudson Mills. Um you wa- along the Huron River, you can see several signs of the the obvious beaver chips and and their artwork, so.
And you and you know, Sean, that if if uh the Toronto Limited people do plant like they wanted to uh trees along the creek there for uh vegetation and uh um uh that that that's kind of not be a happy thing with them when they found that they're, they put this tree and it's all of a sudden it's gone, so.
Yeah, the netting that they've put up has has pretty well kept the deer and whatever it is from gnawing on them, I think, according to Bill Phillips, so they've been successful in protecting what they planted.
Good.
Uh on this Thursday, uh we have a fire board meeting. Uh one of the um things that it's time to do every six years, we have to appoint the rotating board member and um the fire board had a discussion this past meeting in March that um rather than just try and rotate it around for community, that uh each community could bring forth a candidate uh for consideration. And uh I'm going to plan on recommending Jim Seeta stay on that board uh as the city's recommendation, unless I hear objection from anybody here. Um Jim's agreed to do that. Uh I think Webster Township may may pose a John Scharf. John's expressed an interest. He's a trustee there. Um although I uh I've spoken with um one of the Webster Township representatives who is actually still supportive of Jim, so we'll see, but we're we're changing the methodology for doing it. We're going to allow each community a chance to bring forth the person and and uh weigh those candidates a little bit, so I think it's a healthier, better system than just somebody picking up a name and uh that being it for six years and then going to the next community, so just wanted to make everybody aware of of that and and my intention to recommend Jim. Does anybody have any questions for me? Oh, Jamie?
Yep, thanks. Uh yeah, I have a general question um potentially of the city manager search committee or potentially just of you. Um thinking back to how long ago the posting was made and then closed, I think it was last open in early January and it's, you know, now been some months since then. Uh I I mean, I've begun reviewing some of the applications, um not as closely as you have. I don't know if anybody on the committee sees any value to reposting the position for some period of time, given that you're now actively reviewing applications. Is there any benefit to that? Any drawback to that? Um so yeah, just just because there's been a delay.
Just just uh so you're so you're aware, we we said we were, there was no closure to the application process. We've actually been accepting them. We we had an initial first review that was or when Marie organized and distributed them. Um but we we've taken applications after that period all the way up through just a few weeks ago, I think.
Okay.
I think I think, Jamie, we've got, I think we've got uh, I think we've got good candidates was my pers- perspective. I I I mean, even including our own city manager uh that that applied or interim city manager, we have good candidates that um we're not lacking, we're not acting lacking people with experience.
Okay, just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Yeah, I think I I think at this point, my my goal would be to continue working with the committee and bringing forward some folks that we can all talk to. If we find that through that process, there's not somebody that we think can help the city, um frankly, I'd be surprised, uh but you know, then we can talk about reopening it if that's where we want to go.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your question and your interest in that. I'll get the numbers of the applicants that um are down to the last six to everyone, so you can look at those a little more closely.
Thanks.
And Sean, one of the things that we did is that uh you mentioned it to every candidate that we had uh that we have kind of uh made sure that the new members uh going through workshops and stuff where they're kind of caught up to date of what's going on and so that they were brought up to date on a lot of these issues that we deal with all the time, well, uh we we we're not going to do that, I don't think, with another uh appointee here, because we have appointees that have shown interest and have it ahead and so uh you know, I I think I agree with Sean a hundred percent, we got excellent candidates. Uh and amazingly, how many of them, I think we like the area and like Dexter. They 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 rave about it.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, um let's move on to the consent agenda, item J. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I move, we approved the three items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll in the amount of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents. The publication of delinquent utility bills for the city and EDF category B grant application for Dexter Crossing.
Okay, motion by Ms. Fisher, is there a second, please?
A second.
Was that Wa?
Yeah.
Thank you, Wa, second by Ms. Hubbard. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda, and Zach has indicated he's going to abstain.
Okay. Should I call his name anyway to have him verbally say?
Yes, sure, sure.
Okay, okay. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Abstain.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, motion carries on those three items, good luck on the application for the funding, that would be great if we can get that, my kudos to the
some wood.
To the staffer for putting that forward. Item K1 is old business, which was postponed from a previous meeting, it's a consideration of a request to vacate a public street and portion of a public alley submitted by Mike Penn of thirty-three eighty-nine Broad Street. Okay, I'll move on to L biz, new item, new business item L1.
Hold, hold, hold on.
I'm happy to be get the motion on page one seventeen, to approve the vacation of the remaining portion subject to the following conditions, I think, one, so this is on page one seventeen. One, I think we need to clarify to whom the written statement should be given, and I think it should be the city, so the petitioner, you know, something, it should clarify where that's going. And then point five, in the first line, it says as site here, and so as cited, it's just that word is spelled wrong, it needs a D. But those would be the changes I would make to the motion, otherwise that's the motion I'm making.
I'm sorry, Jamie, I didn't catch the first point you made, please.
Yeah, so under number one, it just says a written statement of support of the vacation request from Ms. Finley, just to clarify to whom that should be provided. I'm guessing the city, just the other ones specify, you know, something's given to Ms. Finley, or something's given to AT&amp;T, or something's given to the city, so just indicate that that, I'm guessing, needs to come, come to the city. And then, yeah, the site to cited in number five.
Thank you.
Also, Cousins. So, a council comment?
I guess, is it worth, you know, Cole had that question earlier on about the, you know, transaction, I don't. Somebody can clarify exactly what this entails in terms of property and, and impact of the charter amendment, that would be helpful.
The charter amendment doesn't apply.
Okay, correct.
At all, at all.
Okay, thanks.
Zach?
This is, firstly, I would have liked to have seen all of the conditions brought in by the applicant ahead of time, I think it, it gets tricky administratively for staff to have to trick these, check these things out. So going forward, I'd be more supportive if staff said, you guys need to have all these things before you bring it. I did have a question, I don't recall seeing it there, because the public ways being vacated, did the fire department express any concerns about access along that alley? I know they like to be able to drive through, but it hasn't been used for that in many, many years.
No, Zach, there was no comments made.
All right, thank you.
Just to address your, your point, there are a couple of things that this, the council's action goes in two steps. Even, even if Mrs. Finley had provided a statement to Mr. Penn, excuse me, and even if there was an access easement that he'd already granted to her, there are certain things that that he can't, the petitioner can't finalize without counsel saying, yes, we are going to vacate, and then come back at the later date with the resolution with those recorded documents. Okay?
Yep, and I guess I was thinking more to the actual legal descriptions being prepared, so that the township engineer could have done those full review by this point.
Got it, thank you.
Michelle, I, I took a walk out there to try and understand this property a little bit better. And I real, I realized that it's, it's certainly not in use as a public right of way in terms of, there's no street there, or no formal street for most of this, the, the alley between lot one and five has a little more definition, if you will, than the other, but, but the, the, whatever we're calling it, the west half of that right of way, the fourth street right of way. Has any consideration been given to the fact that if we ever needed to bring some utility across the railroad tracks from the old village, that that allows us to get to that corner of Huron by the S curve? I, I, I'm not in favor of giving that up without having an easement to cross that.
And so I'm glad you brought that up, that is one of the updates from the last time this was in front of you. That was discussed with the applicant, and on page five of the report, I don't remember what page that is for your packet, but you'll see that he has agreed to provide a utility easement that would go from the alley twenty feet in.
Yeah, that's not where I think we need it. I think, I think we would want it from Broad Street through the right of way that we have. If we were going to do anything significant, that like, if you had to bring another sewer, I mean, right now, all, Dan can help me, but all the sewer goes down to Huron Street and comes back around, or crosses at Fifth. If we ever needed to put in another sewer, you wouldn't come up the alley. It's just not.
So you would want an easement up the broads, the remainder of the Fourth Street right of way, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I, I see that as a valuable future potential corridor if we needed it to get across the railroad, I realize you would need, or either way, you would need an easement under the railroad or to get something across the railroad, no matter where you did it. But I don't know why we would give, I don't know why we, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure I'm in favor of this vacation.
You can make that a condition of approval, Sean, and I'm sure Mike would, the applicant would work with you on it. Or you can postpone it again, and I can go back to him to find out for sure.
I, I, well, I, you know, again, until I had walked it and gotten my bearings on where it is, and, you know, it's not a place that you go very often. And, but when I went across to, I went up through the, the hillside there and on, and that's kind of a wooded area, and as I looked across the tracks, I could see Huron, and then I went the other way. I don't know, you know, I don't know how real that would be if we'd ever have to do that or not, but if we ever had to, let's say something happened to the Fifth Street crossing, or, or we ever had to bring another sewer across somehow, I don't know, I'm just bringing that up now, it seems like, you know, he has the benefit of, nobody's using it now, I don't know why we'd want to just give it up, I guess is my point. He could, he could still apply to improve his driveway, if that's the main impetus there, and that the carriage house or wherever that is, that's right next to the right of way, doesn't bother anybody, because nobody drives there. That's just, I don't know, just by two cents on it.
So are you saying that an easement isn't, even with an easement, you're not comfortable with it? With the vacation request?
Well, you know, all, all I know, Michelle, is that, you know, the, the public lands and plats were set up, you know, for a reason, and you may not know what that reason is today. And, but I, I just think that it's in our best interest long term to maintain flexibility, you know. There were, there were several lands that we used to own that we had to buy back around the pond when we wanted to develop the park. If we had just kept the lands, we wouldn't have had to buy them later, but I would hate to think that we vacate this thing. And then who knows what the situation is in the future, but if we ever needed to get across the tracks towards the wastewater treatment plant, this is, I mean, it doesn't look like a, a perfect angle, or, you know, it doesn't look like every other street, but it's property that would, you could use to do that if you had to. And I'm just bringing that up now as part of, I didn't know what else to bring up.
Why, why wouldn't you use Fifth Street as we already used it now? For a future?
You, you, you could, Paul, you could, I, I, you know, I don't, again, I don't know. I'm not saying you couldn't use Fifth Street, I know we use that at some point also, I'm just saying that this is another, it's another way to, you know, it's another opportunity there. Well, currently with Fifth Street, we have two sewer trunk lines that run underneath of it, and in between that, we have a water main. So it's pretty crowded, is what you're saying? Pretty crowded, and then everything from DPW way along the railroad tracks out to Huron Farms comes in Huron Street. That's the main trunk line that takes all that on, cottonwood, all of that. We don't currently have any water sewer that goes under Broad Street, though. Underneath railroad tracks. Yeah, up by the train depot. Yep. Yeah. But, right, I mean, it potentially could be a crossing, especially, you know, with what we're looking at for potential city offices. Turns out, we don't, we don't own some property in between Alpha Metal and that potential nuisance city offices. Like I said, I, I didn't think of it until after I'd walked it and started getting my bearings, and, you know, I, I'm not, if, 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 if an easement, it just seems like if we're going to ask, ask for an easement there, what's the difference between having an easement for the whole thing or just having it right of way? I, I mean, I.
You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need the easement to be the entire forty-nine and a half feet. It would be twenty feet, and it would probably be closer to the.
Well, Michelle, all I know is it's awfully hard to construct stuff in twenty feet when it has to be deeper, when it has to be bored or whatever. Twenty, twenty feet gets pretty narrow, I know that's the typical easement. But in my experience, that's, that's, that's still pretty narrow. Donna, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, I think I'd like to move that we postpone this until Patrick and Michelle, you and any, Dan and anyone else concerned, bring this back to us with more definition to it.
Okay, that, that's a motion?
It's a motion, postpone, yes, until you bring it back to us.
Is there a second to postpone?
Second, Michelle's.
Second, Michelle's, thank you, Zach. Discussion on the postponement?
I was, I was going to make my comments before the motion, but Donna, I'm.
Sorry.
That's all right, no problem.
Didn't tell me.
Go, 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 go ahead, Paul.
No big deal, that's not a big deal, it's that, that, you know, this gentleman has talked about this for a long time, people that were formerly owners of that property talked about it. That was Dan.
Fletcher.
Fletcher. And so this is not new ground that we're piling here, okay? This has been going on for a long time, and, and now we're going to tell the guy, oh, by the way, we may want to ease, well, we should have thought of that long ago, when we had this discussion with him. Instead of this, I don't like to go jerking around, but, but, but having him have to come back again with some other type of process, which may cost him money, I don't know, but, but it just seems like we don't have our stuff together either. And we're asking him to delay it again because we found out something recently, and I, I just don't think that's the way we ought to treat citizens, I don't think we ought to treat the public that way.
Well, Paul, this hasn't come up, this hasn't come up since I've been on council, and that started seventeen years ago. So it's not recently that it's come up.
I think, I think Donna, if you remember Dan Fletcher, when he lived there before the pins did, he, he brought it up a number of times.
We spent a great deal of time on this, if you, I think back, you can correct me, Paul, if I'm wrong, but we spent a lot of time on this piece of property over various things, at one time, somebody wanted to make it a buildable lot, they couldn't do that. Another time, there was a vacation, the other time, somebody else didn't want to give up their piece of it. So, but we're talking way, way back, Paul, probably at least twenty, twenty-five years ago.
Well, yeah, there's a nice summary in the packet, it says in nineteen ninety-six.
Okay.
Nineteen ninety-six, council adopted a second resolution, that's twenty-five years ago.
But it's a new order.
Well, that, that's okay, I'm just saying, we, we just got the, all this stuff together, I, I had the chance to walk it, now that it's, it's on the agenda, and I'm just, I'm asking the question is all. I get it, Sean, I'm telling you my opinion. I'm not, I'm not jerking anybody around, I, you know. I don't appreciate that context.
Are we speaking about the amendment now, or the postponement now?
Yes, we are.
We are, but we shouldn't.
Rather get our ducks in a row than I would just say, well, we made a mistake, and now we can't fix it because we made a mistake. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Zach's still got his hand up, and then Jamie, and I thought I saw Wa's hand at one point.
Yep, I, I will just add that vacation of public ways is a big deal. And the applicant has expressed willingness to grant an easement in one portion. And so I'm comfortable and supportive of doing a little bit more delay so that our technical staff can determine where the best location might be for that, so that we future-proof this decision for those that come behind us, and that's all.
Thanks, Zach. Jamie?
Yep, thanks, yeah, I think I just want to echo a bit about what Paul said, and then even just what Zach just said now, that, I mean, I suspect if, I would be happy to approve this in the future, or even now with a, you know, conditional on, you know, desired placement of the, of the easement, but I think we should have that more specific thing worked out for next time. I mean, this is the third time this has been in our packet. So I just want to say I would, I don't know, sympathize with the applicant, I don't know, that, you know, this has been in our packet three times, even though the other two times, it's been, you know, a direction to postpone because there hasn't been sufficient information.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot to catch up on here, there's, I mean, there's pages of this, of this item.
The applicant has his hand up, Paul, I don't know, or Sean, I don't know if you could see that.
Yep, I'll, I'll, go ahead, Justin, I'll, I'll listen to Mike for sure.
Hi, I don't know if you, you all can see me, I'm actually on the bus heading back from Tecumseh, I'm the high school baseball coach as well, so I apologize for not being able to be there, you know, for the entire, being a kind of coming in as, as we're kind of wrapping up our, our road trip here, but if not, my kind of stepping in mid, mid conversation midstream, my understanding is that it sounds like you are looking to postpone due to, is it the, is the public sewer that, that's in question, like, in terms of it needing to get back to the water treatment plant someday, what's the, just so I'm going to be clear before it's postponed, what exactly are you, what easement are you looking to do?
Mike, I, I'm the one that raised this, thanks for joining us at the meeting, I, I walked the, the property a little bit, and I'm curious as whether, because it lines up, if you were to go continuously, I'm going to say north across the tracks, or northeast across, northwest, I guess, across the tracks, it, it, it lines up right with where Huron Street is, which leads right to our wastewater treatment plant. And in thinking about the future, if we ever had to get sanitary sewer from the old part of the village across the tracks again, or needed an alternate route, or another interceptor for capacity, or a relief sewer, there's all sorts of things that happen sometimes. It's an obvious route through that right of way, straight to the interceptor that leads to the head of the, headworks of the plant. And I'd just like somebody to think about that a little bit more before we just give up the property.
Yeah, and, and I, I guess what I would, my, my response to that would be, throughout this entire process, we've consistently been indicating that we were willing to work with public utilities, public works, whatever the case may be. Indicating that we were willing to work with public utilities, public works, whatever the case may be, uh. In order to grant access easements, things of that nature. So I guess I do need to see, you know, put. Put the proposal back to, to us, but I think our behavior in our comes to be consistent the entire time. And that we're not trying to cut anybody off, not trying to do anything malicious. We just have contiguous property that we would like to. That we're currently maintaining on our own, uh, that we would like to, you know. Be sole owners of, and if that means that, just like, just, just like a pipeline that needs to come through. Out in Pinckney or whatever else, I mean, we're absolutely willing to, we're not looking to cut off, um. To cut off public work, especially when it's gonna benefit the city. If that's where it needs to go, that's where it needs to go. So. And I appreciate you guys considering it.
Thank you for your patience on that and letting us ask the question. I appreciate it, Mike.
Yep, and, and again, sorry that I can't, uh, I couldn't be there the whole time. Unfortunately, I don't dictate the, uh. Southeastern Con- Conference Baseball schedule. While you're the head coach, you don't really have much of a choice.
No, no follow.
Did we win? That's the question.
I don't think he heard you, Paul.
The, the NCAA scheduled basketball games too.
Did, did the Dreadnoughts come on top? That's the question.
I, I'd prefer not to answer that question at this moment.
All right, so we have.
We are leading a game two, that'll look at that.
There we go. Good luck. We have a motion, um. By Fisher, second by, uh, Michelle's to postpone. Uh, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to postpone.
One question, or do we wanna, uh, say to what meeting we're gonna postpone this, or?
Well, until, until we have a chance to meet, whenever, and we, we have a meeting, so.
That's what I said. You guys got together is what I put in the motion.
Not, not to a specific meeting, Carol.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, so the postponing motion, Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, thank you, council, and thank you staff for listening to that consideration. Um, new business, we're on to page four of our agenda. A new business item L one is consideration of a park use permit request. From the Dexter Chamber of Commerce for the Friday Summer Concert Series.
To represent it to the, to the chamber, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, motion by Cousins? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Was that, uh, Griff, Jamie?
Yep.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, sorry, I was writing and didn't see the hand. Okay, so Cousins and Griffin? Okay, discussion. Paul, you wanna lead the discussion?
Well, I, I think that what we have seen here once again is a effort by a group to try to. Still, uh, have some activities, uh, under the guidelines and rules, at least as they are today. We don't know what they'll be in the future. Uh, but as, as today, we would like to have this activity and provide that. An opportunity for people to have some, an outlet here. And so, uh, with the diagrams and the written information here. I, I think they've done this the best that we can and the safest way we can under current conditions, or I think we have to. Continue on with this and, and, uh, allow it to happen.
Uh, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I thought that they had done a nice job of putting their plan together, um, as far as, because. Even though, um, restrictions may be lifted in the future, by the time they're ready to have the event. They've got scouts, they've got other people involved, giving you a mask if you need a mask, want a mask. I, I, I think this one will be okay. Um, as long as they stick to the guides of the, um, the national guys.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alex and then Jamie?
Yeah, I echo the same regards. I really do appreciate the diligence on behalf of the applicant. With reaching out to the Boy Scouts and getting their help, as well as providing the masks. Um, my only concern though is that three hundred, four hundred people. Is, seems to me a lot for an event like this in such a small park. Um, if it's able to maintain an adequate distance. Really six feet, I think is important, because with an event like this, you are sitting there for an extended period of time, listening to them play their music. And so if you aren't six feet away from, um, someone, that is, can become dangerous. And I do worry that with. Three hundred, four hundred people, it could really become a, a disaster if God forbid, someone ended up spreading, uh. Corona to the people there. It would really be a contact tracing nightmare. So. Maybe if there was some way to have people sign in to say that they're there, just to ease that. I, I, that would make me feel a little bit comfortable. But I really do appreciate all the effort taken to be sure that this is as safe as possible.
Thanks, Alex. Uh, Jamie, and then Zach?
Yep, thanks. Um, maybe a more general question. Um. You know, we've seen a number of applications now coming in for Monument Park. We had Ice Fest, uh, Dexter Days Garden Club. Um, maybe I'm missing some. And this kind of relates to Parks and Rec, considering what, what else could go on the permit. You know, we've seen different levels of detail, I think, put into what the drawing is. I mean, I think what we got from the garden club was. You know, seemed to be on architecture paper with, you know, that, you know, drawing to scale kind of a thing. I don't know if that's what that would take for this city to have that put together, given the number of events that come through to Monument Park. Is there some sort of standardized template where, you know, not to say like we're dictating placement of things, but like. Just so that these applicants aren't having to reinvent the wheel every time with coming up with a drawing, if a drawing is something that we like, which it seems like people like the visual. Is there a little bit more we can do to provide some sort of a template that would even indicate? You know, and if, as long as six feet is good, you know, it seems like the six feet thing is gonna be around for a while. Can we incorporate that in there and have X's and say you could have, you know, X number of groups? Anyways, it, it would help me, so I'm not having to figure this out. Um, I think it would help the applicant, so they're not having to figure out, and I think it would help standardize the process, so. Um, when we're, it seems like we might be seeing more of these events as we get into warmer months. Um, I think it would help to standardize the process.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's pretty easy probably to share a, a standard drawing with GIS scenarios and such these days, Jamie. That's, I think that's worth looking into. Good comment. Uh, Zach, and then, um, Bella, we'll follow.
Uh, for staff, I haven't seen in here is the reference to, um. Following applicable health department rules or orders. Aside from reference to social distancing.
Um, just, uh, work with Boy Scouts with, uh, enforcing safety guidelines put in place by Chamber and City.
All right, um, I will throw up there some spaghetti that we ought to include a provision that the use be consistent with. Uh, state and county health department. I could see a time, um, where they may say, limit the number of people. Um, especially with the, one of these variants seems to be able to get past the Pfizer. So I'd like to have that part of this. I will also ask the question, had they discussed closing Central Street to provide more space? And for staff, how big of an issue is it to close it on every Friday?
So, uh, they did, did not include the closure of Central Street in, in their permit application. Um. To, to close Central Street every Friday. Um. You're, you're, you're talking about basically leaving the barricades out all summer. Um. In the park so that way they can be moved onto Central Street Friday morning and removed. Friday evening, basically. Um. If, if we're talking about staff removing the barricades in the evening, you're talking about, uh, DPW overtime every Friday.
Right, well, I guess I would say we, there is a bit of time to this. I would, I would like staff to have the conversation with them to see. If they would be interested in closing the street and also if there are less cumbersome ways we can safely close the street. Uh, that don't generate a bunch of extra time for our already stressed DPW folks. That's all I've got.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Uh, Michelle, and then we'll go to Wa, or to Bella. Michelle and Bella?
Thanks, Sean. So, the, the chamber reached out to me the end of February, beginning of March. Um, asking for some, some guidance, um, as it pertained to, um. Being able to meet, um. Guidelines, um, uh, because they were interested in, in submitting an application. So I had explained to them that, and this, to the best of my knowledge, is still in place. It's the February eighth COVID nineteen gathering face and mask, uh, face mask order. And in that order, section two B two states that for outdoor non-residential venues without fixed seating. Attendance is limited to twenty persons per thousand square feet of event area. Um, and in the, the case of our Monument Park, that's about a, uh, half acre. Site, so twenty-one hundred, uh, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty, um, square feet. Twenty persons per thousand, that's where the four hundred and thirty-five number came, Alex. Um, um, I also explained to them that, um, social distancing, wearing masks. Um, um, were things that had to also be followed per those guidelines. Um, and, um. Uh, suggested that they be able to explain to you or demonstrate, um, who will monitor and how. To ensure attendance doesn't exceed, you know, that maximum four hundred and thirty-five people. Um, who'd be enforcing mask wearing and then, uh, sanitize, sanitizing stations. Um, so that provides some of the background for the way they've provided their, their application and the number that they provided.
Thanks, Michelle. Uh, Bella?
Um, yeah, so my topic has already been like, or my question has already been like touched on by a. Couple times, like Michelle just mentioned it, but like, I don't know if it's answered, like, who will be like monitoring to make sure people are like. Like keeping their distance and keeping their masks, do you know?
I think we know that the Boy Scouts are gonna offer masks to anyone that doesn't have one. The monitoring part is not quite covered.
Okay, um, for the contact tracing, they, like, it's kind of what Alex said, but like. Are they gonna like be recording like who goes in specifically or not? Cause like, I know they could do like contact tracing and it's like having people sign in, like state what part of the park they're gonna stay at or something like that.
Uh, Wa, and then Paul?
Uh, thanks. I just wanna, um, not gloss over the, um, issue of food. Um, I know that like they're not providing food, but I feel like this is an event where people have a tendency to bring. Things with them. Um, and it, it, you know, I mean, Bella just said it, who's, we're not sure exactly who's gonna monitor. Like the face mask wearing after they're given out, if you don't have one, but I, I just wanna make sure that that's addressed as, as well, I guess. I mean, I don't know how you say like, don't bring food to the park, but like, if you've gotta be wearing your mask. And according to these rules that are in place right now, I just wanna make sure that we're not approving something that violates rules that are in place right now.
Okay, maybe something to get some clarification on. Uh, back to you, Paul?
Uh, can Michelle answer that question, the, about food? Uh, and the guidelines for the CVC or for this county?
Yes, again, that same order that I had cited earlier. If you're going to have an area where people are eating, it has to be a separate area. Um, so they could set up, um, um. If, if council wanted them to, they could set up the map to show where people who don't bring food into the park would sit. And be masked, whereas people that do bring food into the park and want to eat it. They, they're in a separate area. Um, that's the, that's what the, um, the, the health guideline requires. So that you don't have that intermingling.
Uh, okay, so that, that only makes it more complicated, you know, uh, the. They've never had, in their opinion, when we had this discussion, this many people, four hundred and some people at one of these events. They don't think they've ever reached that number, okay?
Right.
And that, now, that doesn't say that because we haven't had any entertainment, that it's not gonna be something that. People will say, gee, that's the first time I can be able to get out, so let's go, and everybody's there and, and they, and you know, uh. Uh, you, you, you've got the, uh, the, the. Dairy Queen across the street, people eat there and they bring it in the park. Uh, what if they, what if they're not even in that concert? Area and they just walk down the street there, or walk down the sidewalk with a Dairy Queen in their hands? Uh, are we giving them a mask? Are we stopping them? Uh, what about, uh, uh, the, the, uh. Uh, barbecue place there? He, that's one of the things he loves to do is to promote the food on Friday nights when there's, are those events, cause it's. It's a good benefit for him, okay? Uh, so, uh. When I've been there, and I've been there a number of times, I don't, well, every night that they have one on Friday nights, but I've been there a number of times. There are groups of people that know each other and they sit either close to each other, or they sit in a general area with each other, okay? They may not sit side by side, usually it's husband, wives or a family, uh, kids are running around. Uh, I, 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 I think that, uh. That you're, you're, that, that we have an opportunity, but once again. If we feel that this is not gonna be workable, then let them know right away because it's gonna be, uh, no way that they can do it. In an area where they can rope off this for food, this is not for food, you can't bring the Dairy Queen down the sidewalk with a pizza that you bought. It's, it's gonna be, uh, a, a, a real problem. In my opinion, and I thought we had done a pretty good job of, of doing this, although that, that, that sketch is not very good because. As I read that, it looks to me like you have Central Street, you have Main Street, and you have a straight line for a sidewalk. And there are people on the other side of those sidewalks that sit there many times, outside of the sidewalk, close to the streets. They park there on Central Street, they walk across the center, set their, their, uh, chair down, and then they just leave when they want to and go back to the car and leave. That's a special group that kind of does that all the time. Others sit there all night long. But they've never, in their, in their opinion, and I, and I agree with them, I don't think it's ever been close to four hundred people there in that park. For a night event, other than Dexter Days, on Friday night at Dexter Days.
So. I thank everybody for the comments on this. Um, I'd like to add a few thoughts of my own. So, on the application. I, they, they should be checking hold and assembly involving thirty or more participants, for one, right? That box should be checked, right? And then, what is the, what is the reference to the sidewalk sales? Are we approved, is there something that I'm not aware of that is going on also at that time that we've approved? Or there's a, the, under type of activity, it says also to support. I think it's meant to be our local merchants and restaurants having sidewalk sales or special discounts featured every Friday evening. I wanna make sure that I know what we're approving, I guess, and this kind of ties, this kind of ties. Something to something else, and I'm, I guess I'm not quite sure. Is this a bigger?
So I, I can, I can answer that. Traditionally, and Donna would remember this, when we started, when Dexter Days was started. It was also a sidewalk sale activity for two days. You know, you call it sidewalk sales, you can see, say it, people wanna get rid of the stuff that they couldn't sell at any other time, and so they put it out there and they tried to sell it. So that's what they were trying, they were trying to, to, to derive. An activity that was gonna be beneficial to the, to the areas that are in, on the main street there. To make a little bit more money when they haven't been able to do that very easily. And this was gonna drive people downtown. Now, I don't know, we have restrictions of people standing out there selling something. On those days, or you just settle out like they used to and say, okay, you go in a store, you pay for this like in Acne's. Or any of the other places. I don't know how that is done anymore. Well, Paul. I have seen, I have seen stuff in front of the, uh, place next to the Bureau Grotto there. Uh, my mind escapes my mind, they, they put out stuff on racks for people to buy and walk in there and, and, and buy stuff. So does that prevent this? I think that's what they're trying to address. Uh, other things there that, you know, nobody's gonna stand out there with it. With a purse to say, okay, that's four dollars, you have to do me, you know, sell it right here. It's to go in, you know, here they are. Go in and pay for it and, and, in, in the business.
Well, okay, I, I, I'm just was trying to, I don't, I, you know. Well, okay, I I'm just was trying to, I don't, you know, this goes back to my question is always, what is it that we're approving? And there's been some really good points tonight. You know, the question of is food allowed? You know, they they've got on their application, the sidewalk sales thing, you know, in in. Right now, when we're trying to have wide sidewalks, I don't know that encouraging people to put more stuff on the sidewalks is necessarily a. What we're looking at or not, but maybe maybe we are. I just it it's not clear if it's part of the application or not. I just wanna make sure I know what I'm voting on.
It was an afterthought, to be honest, Sean.
Okay, all right, well, I'm. I'm generally okay with with giving this a try. I I do agree that I think it would be. It would be. Important to try to somehow. Designate some space or some separation that shows. How people will stay in rows and, you know, I was gathering that they were gonna try and use these little signs to. Create rows and distance markers and give some people an idea of how many people could be between each sign. You know, that I I think they're getting they're getting close to a good idea. I think they have a good idea. I don't know that the detail is all quite there, but I'm. Anyway, the the sidewalk sales thing confuses me. I don't know what I don't know what that means.
I I have no problem sending it back to them, asking to clarify those questions or any other questions that people would have. Cause I think they have time, cause I think as I understood, they have all of the concerts already scheduled.
Okay. Well, if we could get some clarification, I think that would be prudent for us to know, you know, that we we wanted to know what we were trying to vote on on Dexter Days the same way and. I guess I just wanna make sure that I understand the application. And I, like I said, I think that they should be. Checking hold an assembly involving thirty or more participants on the. On the application.
Who chairs the who chairs this particular piece of the committee?
I think it's just done by 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 the people that they're at the chamber there. They had a meeting, they had a meeting and they sit down and talked about it. They don't have a they don't have a committee. Now, there's lucky if they get.
Meet with staff and try to, I said, maybe they would take the time to meet with staff and let those little pieces get picked out and.
Our staff? Our staff?
Yeah, our staff and.
Yeah, well, yeah, they they have no problem with that.
Bella, your hand is still up? Does Bella have another comment?
I I asked for mute.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to lower my hand.
No problem, no problem. Thank you. Just making sure. Jamie, thanks for being patient.
Yeah, I should think. Yeah, real quick, um, I just pulled up the epidemic order dated March nineteenth. There are two things on a date. One is their dining guide for outdoor dining saying permitted at one hundred percent capacity. But maybe this is Michigan and not Washington County. MDHHS. Maybe I don't know, it's Washington more specific. Anyways, the point I'm trying to make, they talk about limits on on attendance at non residential gatherings, saying you need to wear a face mask at all times. Unless eating or drinking while seated in a designated area. You know, consumption of food or beverages permitted only while seated in a designated area with a group of no more than six people. And that you have to be at least six feet apart. So my sense is I've never been to one of these events, but my sense is given that this is likely something where people are more. Stationary, they pick their spot and they sit in it and they listen to the music. In some sense, it functions sort of like outdoor dining. And if if what I'm referring to is relevant, or even if there's something else that's more specific or Washington County. I would have no problem, you know, if they need to designate the whole spaces of, you know, food can be consumed anywhere. As long as you're in your group of people and you're six feet away from it anywhere else. To me, it seems really analogous to outdoor dining. And so to whatever extent that that is currently permitted by whatever order is is most pertinent. I would be comfortable permitting people to get in their spot, open up their snacks and take their masks off while they're there. Cause that seems consistent with what's already being allowed with outdoor dining. The point about the sidewalk sales, my recollection when Chuck came to talk to us. It seemed more like it was gonna be just a collaboration with the downtown businesses to say, hey, we're having our concert series, you might wanna, you know, throw some things out on the sidewalk. Which I think I, you know, we've recently passed that outdoor service area text, those outdoor service area text amendments. So I wouldn't think that even if this is something they're trying to coordinate with those businesses. I wouldn't think that that's something that would ever need to be part of this permit, because it seems to me that those text amendments permit them. To, you know, use the sidewalk for those purposes. So I don't see, I don't see, it seems like they're mentioning it just to say that they would be coordinating with businesses to encourage them to do it, but I. I think they might still have to do something with outdoor service. Area text amendment thing, but Michelle and somebody else would know more about that, so those are my thoughts. Thanks.
You're absolutely right, Jamie. That's exactly what their thoughts were.
Okay, yeah, it could just, I was just reading it, just trying to ask the question. All right, so so where are we, Paul? You you were saying, should we go get it clarified and come back or what do you?
I I I think they could do that, but I think two weeks is not gonna hurt them. We can come back with answers. We'll feel more comfortable and. And hopefully they will too. So let's, I'll make the motion, we delay it until the next meeting and and try to clarify the. The questions that we had and any others that may come up. Please don't wait, please don't wait for two weeks, don't ask your questions, get them in early.
Okay, motion by Cousins, second by Fisher. Any discussion needed on the postponement? Do we think we have a good sense of the questions we're gonna ask? I think we do. Okay, thanks, Justin, for that. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to postpone.
Okay, Hubbard? Michelle?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kio?
Uh, yes. Thank you. Good discussion on that one. Uh, new business item L two is consideration of proposals for due diligence services for the purchase. Potential purpose of purchase of thirty five fifteen Broad Street totaling an amount not to exceed thirty two eight fifty. I don't necessarily think we have to, Justin, do we have to approve all of these at once?
You can you can bring it out if you'd like to.
Well, I I mean, I mean, in terms of the due diligence, do do we like, do we need to? We don't need to pay for the bond advisory services until we're actually deciding to issue bonds, right?
Correct.
Okay, so. We can, we could. That that, I mean, if we approved that, that would only be contingent upon if we actually got to the point of issuing the bonds. Which frankly, I hope we do, but I'm just saying that would be contingent upon that, right?
Correct.
Okay. The whereas the surveying services. I think our due diligence, we wanted to get a surveyor as a survey of the site or at least the latest one, right? Current one? Okay, is 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 there a hand up? Let me see, I'm just scrolling through. Does somebody wanna make a motion for part of this or all of this there? Zach, I see you waving, sorry.
All right, well, I'll I'll give it a crack here. Of uh. The following services, the surveyors, so service services by OHM in an amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars. Phase one environmental site assessment services by ASTI Environmental in an amount not to exceed two thousand two hundred dollars. Appraisal services by Gerald Alcock Company LLC in an amount not to exceed two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And bond advisory services by Baker Tilly. In an amount not to exceed twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. That last one only in the case if we decide to issue bonds to purchase the property.
Well done. Okay, motion by Michelle's.
I'll second that.
Second by Griffin, thank you. Okay, discussion or Justin, you wanna go into detail or elaborate on anything?
Um, I I don't have much more than than what's in the memo. We we reached out and, you know, there were a set of of services. Or um, things that 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 we were looking to do in our due diligence period that were included in the purchase agreement. And the the items included in in the the motion and in the memo. Cover the the remainder of those services. You've already approved partners in architecture to. Work on the the architectural aspects and. Working through the programming of of how how the entrance and building might lay out. And they've already gotten to work on on those services. So this kind of kind of rounds out. Really what we have left to do to inspect the property, to determine whether or not. The property is satisfactory for us to move forward and and purchase.
I'm not seeing one hand. This is well done, Justin, very clear. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the motion.
Yes, Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
He's not there.
Pass, pass.
Okay. Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard? Kio?
Yes. Okay, so motion carries five zero with Cousins not voting. Not participating at this point. New business item L three is consideration of thirty five fifteen Broad Street excess use of space. Uh, this item was requested by Council member Michelle, so I'm going to. Give him the first chance to speak, sir.
Well, I'll go old school and make the motion, then we can debate the motion there. So I. For staff to create and promulgate a request for proposals for the excess space at thirty five fifteen Broad. Generally known as unit three hundred to include the information described in this agenda item and is discussed at council meeting and to promulgate the document. As described in here. Okay, that's what the motion, we can't debate it till it's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Griffin, thank you.
All right, so I will just briefly. There's more space than what we need in there. Two thousand of it is in the the storage building that has pretty obvious use. But we ought to have an idea of what we're gonna do with that three hundred unit. There've been a couple of things recommended, but you know, as part of the funding, we need to know. Is it gonna be commercial? Is it gonna be nonprofit? And so I wanted to throw this out there for us to begin that investigation.
So Zach, are you thinking that this is a formal RFP? Or RFQ? Is this a, is this a? Is this an informal broadcast to the community? I'm not sure. I'm trying to understand what your vision is that we're.
Not the full tux. So the idea is that, you know, we do want to engage these different entities, whether they be nonprofit. Or businesses looking. On something more than just a casual, hey, we got space, might you want to, how much you use it? So here's our space. Tell us how you would use it type of thing.
So I guess. And and we would advertise this to. Just. I mean, do you have a do you have a list or do you do we just put this out on our website? What are you thinking? How would we, who are we? Who's the audience? That like if like if it was a contractor bid, you know, we'd put it out on a Dodge report or a. Someplace where contractors are.
Yep, so what I recommended in here, and it's it's not an exhaustive list, but we obviously have the the channels the city regularly uses. The the Facebook, the website, the email updates that go out. There are a number of known community groups, senior center, I've talked with them, they're not very interested, but it's still be good to reach out to them. Dexter Platers, Creative Washington, HWPI, other groups that may be interested in in establishing a base in the community. Let's see, government agencies that may be looking for space, I've watched our county county parks, schools. And private businesses, and that may be where it it could be best to work with the current Realtors and with Spark. So that's just my list of folks that we would reach out to.
Okay, so so if um. If we support this, we're not, your your goal isn't by the end of May to choose the user though, right? You just wanna get an idea of the interest.
Correct.
So that so that we can. So that. We can have some knowledge of whether we should pay cash for a portion versus bonding at all, that type of thing? Is that like the end goal?
Correct, and and so that we. If if folks say you're buying way more space than the needs assessment says, we can say yes, but we have these groups. That are interested in also using and partnering with us.
Okay, are you are you um? Are you also? Considering the fact that we may find that we need that space?
If if it comes back through the architectural process that we do, then. You know, we, this isn't signing contracts with anybody. This is just saying, come talk to us.
Okay, okay, I I'm I'm okay with doing this. I I um, I wanted to, I was asking some direct questions. Because I I sort of feel like we're not gonna really know the answer to how much space. Do we have to offer until we actually get in there and and try and use it? I I I think that. That should be allowed some time. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna circumvent that, I guess, is what all I'm. But by supporting it, I don't wanna circumvent that 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 step. I mean, I can see, I could see us being in here a year. Before we decided to do much more than let the space be, you know, rent it out for an evening or something. I mean, cause you, cause who, I mean, I think staff's gonna need some time to see how they might use the space if if they had it is all I guess I'm. You're open to that, right?
Yep, although I would hope that the architectural exploration would have at least a decent answer. On that before a year is past.
Could be, yep, could be. Um, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, um, I think I understand where you're going with this, Zach. When I read it, it struck me as when people come through and they estimate you need X amount of space to for this function, that function. They don't, they look, how many employees do we have? What's their basic function and so on, but they don't really dig that deep, so. To go off of what their recommendation is, to me is a little iffy. And I think that as an old clerk who used to go digging around in that Dan's basement. To get get stuff that was all damp and all kind of whatever over at the fire hall. We have never really stored stuff, organized it, put it, given excess, the way that it should be done, because we simply haven't had the space. I think if we get if we get into a new facility and we get all the stuff that belongs to us over where it belongs and get it organized. And get it taken care of, I think we're gonna need more space than we might think. I also think that Michelle probably has to dig and hunt. And what if she had space? She would put that stuff in a much different order than what it's in now. So for me to say that I've got X amount of space too much. That's hard for me to say that. I think we need to get in there and 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 live it. And as far as I think, once people see us in there or know we're going there, we'll hear a whole lot from people that say that they might wanna use space. I I I don't think that will be. Um, that's just my original thought.
Yep, and I will say, having worked for local governments, the one thing that the plans always exclude is enough storage space.
Exactly, yeah.
And I will say the, in the basement there, that as someone who has tried to store things. That made me literally drool and that that's square footage in the basement isn't including the fourteen thousand square feet for the site, so. Personally, I'm comfortable that we're gonna have storage for as long as we're all alive. Without the three hundred unit being used.
Uh, Wa?
So obviously, I mean, I've said in the past that part of the reason why I like the space is the potential for the flex space for the community use. I'm just not sure we're quite there yet. And I wanna make sure we're managing expectations with the community properly, because right now. To say that it's specifically the three hundred unit, I mean, etymologically, yes, it probably looks like that is what would be left over. We were gonna, you know, take a guess at it right now, but we're still, I just think we're still a little too early in the process. To make that determination even sort of definitively, if that makes sense.
I I think I think one of the things that's. That Zach was alluding to leading us towards is, you know, whether or not we ever thought we would lease the space out to somebody. And the the, so we're all on the same page again, the implication of that is if we. If we were to issue bonds, they're tax exempt, which means we get a lower interest rate. Well, we can't lease out the space. That we've purchased with those tax exempt bonds. that we've purchased with those tax exempt bonds, because then we'd be making money off of the deal. So there needs to be a different way of financing that, or either financing it with maybe a combination of bonds, I suppose, or, or we just choose to pay cash for a certain portion of the building. And I, I'm, I, I, I think I, I lean towards the side that I think it's, it's premature, I think, to try and figure out how to use that space until we've actually figured out how we want to get in there and and use it a little bit. But I, I think the, 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 what I like about this item is that I think it should really start the conversation regarding do we want to bond for the work or pay for a combination of cash? I mean, do we, and that, that's what I think we all need to start thinking about. Regardless of whether we actually issue this or we don't issue this, if, if you want the opportunity to lease that space without it impacting any bonds, because we, we're going to have to issue some bonds, we don't have the two million in cash, so the question is, if that space in the three hundred wing, or whatever you want to call it, is, you know, twenty percent of the space or twenty-five, I don't know what it even is. I don't know what the square footage is of that that we're even talking about, because there's a conference room down there that I think the, I think the staff feel would be a very good, you know, break room. So I'm not even sure I'm understand what's defined by the three hundred space, other than that second floor that's up there on the stairway. You know, probably for a couple hundred thousand dollars or a few hundred thousand dollars in cash, we could take the whole issue off the table, you know what I mean? Because I think our bond attorneys, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, have indicated that if we pay cash for a certain amount and it covers the percentage of square foot that we would be considered leasing, you don't have that, that worry about having to make money on it. Is that true?
That's, that's my understanding. I would, I want to confirm that with Baker Tilly, but that's, that's my, my understanding at least.
Okay, yeah, if you could confirm that, I think that would be good. You know, because I think that's, that's really where this is leading, if, you know, from my perspective. Jamie?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, another more general conversation to have is, do people like the idea of a shared user, you know, a separate user or something in that space? I think you know, the needs assessment indicated we needed, what, you know, half of this or whatever. I think, of course, if you give people more space, it's gonna, you're going to take up more space, or you'll find a way to use it, I think. So I think the question is, do we like the idea of trying to monetize part of this purchase? Do we like the idea of trying to find space for somebody else? And I, I think I'm in favor of leaving the door open to that. I'd have to give more thought to the cash purchase versus doing this now. I, you know, see what people are saying about, you know, setting false expectations, that kind of a thing. I, I would say just, you may be a step back or higher level, I'm not sure how to describe it, that I, I'm in favor of potentially trying to monetize the space or collaborate with another community organization to the extent that that, you know, is something that they would be interested in and that we can accommodate, given that it is a larger space than we were originally quoted as having need, need for.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm, Jamie, I'm okay with what you're thinking about. I, I, you know, I don't think it's wrong to think about whether or not we would have another user there. I just think that we need to, we need to get through the whole thought of how are we going to use it, since we're the ones that are going to own the building and buy the building. And I think that all ties back to the same question, which is, if you want to monetize the space, are you prepared to pay some cash for the portion of it that you would monetize? And it doesn't really matter what the, I mean, we could learn who might be interested in that space. It might be, you know, the theater groups, it might be the Boy Scouts, it might be the Chamber, I don't know, you know, there could be all sorts of people that might be interested in it, even if it was just on a, a one night a week thing. I, I suppose there's that exercise. I just think that that, I don't think that that exercise necessarily needs to happen prior to us getting the building. I think it did be kind of a fun exercise. That's why I'm saying if we're, if, if I'm going to support this, I want it to be an open minded an open minded thing that gives the city the chance to figure out the use of the space. I don't want to get other people's hopes up necessarily, when we haven't even gotten past, you know, what we're going to use and what we're not. Wow, are you, or who was?
If I, I don't know, I think it's all sort of been said. I, I, I don't want to close the door to being able to monetize some of the space, but, I mean, I I just, again, I, I don't think that we're quite there in the process just yet. And Paul was waiting his turn for.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to go to him now. Paul, go ahead. Thank you for that, wow.
Well, I, I, there are some things going through my head right now that I, that I can't even quite grasp around it with further, with past discussions that we've had about space and what we're going to do with, okay, if we did have. You know, is it six thousand square feet that we said it was going to do? Was it seventy-five hundred square feet? That's changed different times. At one time, we said, well, we'll talk to the senior centers to see if they want to revolve with us down there on, on, on Forest and Broad Street, okay? Then, uh, then we talked about a a, a community, uh, uh, center down there, too, with that. I mean, our minds were all over the place with that piece of property. This piece of property is unique in that it doesn't really set itself very well for easy divisions, and we all know that, including parking and how to get the access in and out of that building other than one way in and basically going back out the same way. With the handicaps, steps, handicap area, and elevator, all the things we're talking about. So when I, when I see all that, we say, well, you know, well, let's wait for a while to figure out how we're going to use it. Well, that's just the opposite of what we decided with, what we, we talked about the fire hall. It's too big. We don't need it. They can do some of their plan together, they're trained together in another space. We can put another fire truck out there. We don't need that space. We've already made some of those discussions, had those discussions in public. While here, we're trying to fill up a space, and in that area, we had, we, we're going to cut back the space because there were some that didn't want the fire hall to be there and be that big. That's the difference, the only difference. And for somebody to say, well, I really think it's great because it's historic. Well, yes, it is historic, but does it really fit? But is that a criteria that you have when you buy something that is historic? Where does that rank in our scale? To me, it's toward the bottom. I like the idea that it's historic. But if it's not, it's unusable space for us, which we're buying and paying for. Whether it's a year now that we figured it out, or that we tried to figure it out before, or we do the bonds issue. I don't know, I'm not there yet. I'm like, wow, I haven't seen us have a plan yet. It tells me how much it's going to cost, where it's going to, where we're going to come up with the money, and match that with what our other need is in this city, and that is a fair are we just going to say, okay, now we've got a fire, a, a city hall that's got, let's use a magic number, ten thousand square feet, and we're going to use all of it for storage, for meetings, for everything that we need now and in the future. We're also going to have a fire hall that's going to be equal, equally necessary to do what we need now and in the future. We haven't had that discussion yet. So we're going to, we're, we're going to take one and solve that problem without even any further discussion on this, on the first one or the second one, whatever your priorities have to be. I just think that that the public would think that's a great spot. It's a great spot, but doesn't match all the other needs that we have when it's almost twice as big as what we ever talked about at any point in time. But because it's a good deal and historic, we're going to do it. Think about what that says to the public. We're just going to do it because it's historic and because it's a space that we can use. We'll figure it out. We'll never have enough storage space, so we'll figure it out in the future. We never have enough space. As I, as I looked at the first part of that building, A, there were more offices there than by three or four offices that we have right now, used for staff. Unless we're going to have three and four more staff. I counted fourteen of them up there, I think. We don't have that many offices in our present building. We need more, we need bigger spaces, or do we need more numbers? I don't know that yet. I haven't seen that plan out. So I think we've got to be cautious about just saying, because we got an opportunity to buy a big piece of property, and I, and I've have have said to myself, I've told other people, I'm not shutting this property out just because I don't like it or I do like it. I just want to find the facts out so that I can make adequate decisions. Good decisions for the public for now and in the future. The same way I want to do with the fire halls. And because we can park a ladder truck out someplace else, doesn't mean that that's the best thing for us to do. Or we could have train stations out someplace else, which has been suggested more than once. That's what we should be doing. This is the main fire hall for the DAFD and for the City of Dexter, and we have more residents in this one little space than all the rest of them. At least now we do. And you all live here. Every one of you live within this, this boundary. I'm not there yet with buying this piece of property, but I'm not opposed it when I see the facts and what it could be done and how we can afford it and how we could use it. And I don't think that we would buy a house unless we have, we're really rich and say, well, you know what? It's going to cost me another half a million dollars and another five hundred square, or five thousand square feet on it, or two thousand square feet. I may use that in there because I may have ten more kids or four more kids. You don't think that way.
Also, Paul?
I think so, yeah.
So I know that Zach put a motion out that's similar to what's on the bottom of page one seventy, or am I one seventy-one of the packet? You know, the, the this opportunity is, is one we're evaluating. The, the, the good news about all of this, though, is we don't have to worry about if it's enough space. Every other place we've looked at was a question of, is it enough space? Or what do we have to pay to get that benefit of extra space? In this case, that question, both those questions are easily answered. We're paying, we would be paying a lot less than for anything else we've looked at. And we're not restricted on the space. And that should, that should, that's a, that's a luxury that we have. That's a, that, we should consider that a luxury. And however it gets used in the future, whether it's us or we end up having a partner or a roommate or whatever you want to call it, that would use another user. That just seems like, that, that just seems like something for the future to me in, in terms of the, the adequacy. But I, I, I don't, I don't typically have a problem with asking who might be interested. I think we know who's going to, going to inquire, but I don't think that that should be the basis of our decision at today. I think we should let our, our staff get in there and figure out what our space needs actually are after some time, and then and then a, a, a future decision could be made about whether to lease or use or whatever.
You mean purchase it first and then make that decision, or make, make the decision and then purchase it?
Paul, I, I, I don't think we lose anything purchasing it, because if you, if, if you decide, if you decide that you don't want to use all the space, then you figure out how to market it, or, or how to give it to somebody else to use.
It's just a question. It wasn't a challenge, it was just a question.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm happy you asked it, because I'm, I'm agreeing with, with, with where you're going with it. It, it just seems like it's so easy to do later. But, but if we want to, if we want to complicate, I don't want to complicate this anymore than it is. And we, we, that's a wonderful opportunity to be able to consider that later. It shouldn't have to be a burden now. But I don't, I don't have, I don't have any problem getting necessarily the opinions of it. I'm just saying it's, we got to be careful how we use it. It's not to try and talk ourselves out of this opportunity, because it's, we don't have to make this decision now. If it's going to cloud that, we shouldn't do it.
I don't want anything clouded. I want clear, concise answers.
Then we should just, we should just let the architects come back and let our, if, if we do decide to purchase the building, we should let our staff that are in there figure out how best to use the space. And if they come back and say, hey, we're not going to be able to use this, or we think this can go be leased or loaned or rented or left open at night or whatever, then, then that council at that time could make that decision on the excess space. But it's, it's so affordable even with this extra storage space and whatever it might be in Unit Three Hundred. But I think that, I think there's people that have ideas for portions of that space. Anyway, I, I don't want to be.
I, I'd like, I'd like to hear them, rather than you telling me that, I'd like to hear who they are.
Well, all I know.
I know who those people are.
Well, when, when we were walking around in the tour, Paul, and the one you were at, there was, there was the idea that that space could be a plan room. Okay, we have, we have a lot of plans, and we don't have them organized or accessible. We don't have tables where you can roll them out and look at them.
I agree with that.
That, that's one, that was one idea I heard. The, the, then, the idea that the, that the wastewater treatment plant employees could use that, a portion of that area as a break room, or an extension of the offices that they don't have, maybe. I heard those ideas floating around out there. Because it's so accessible, it's right down the street from the wastewater treatment plant. It, it, we're creating our little corridor over there, which is fine. If, if, if we do this, I should say, if we do this. But there, there's ideas like that, that I think, you know, you we, we, they need time to be, to be, to gel a little bit, and, and maybe we're going to get a first view of that when the architect comes back with some ideas for the use. I don't want to steer it any way. I was trying not to go there, but, but I don't, I think we should figure out how, how do we benefit from using it first, before we worry about if we have excess? Wow, and then Zach?
All right, just, thanks. Just quickly, I mean, I think there's a way to balance, you know, all of this and figuring out how we, how our staff best, you know, uses the space and how we engage the community in whatever space may be left over, managing the expectations and all that. But for me, I really and I want to continue having this discussion, but I, I just think it's premature until we have these due diligence services done and all of, you know, we haven't even seen the architects saying. So, and until I can see that, I just, I, I think we, I, I would put a hold on that.
Okay, thank you, Zach.
So let me make the case for not putting a hold on this. We have a limited time to make a decision with our current earnestment that we've put down. So it's not like we have the luxury of forever. If we, we can extend it, but it's going to cost us more money. So there are a lot of things that have to be happening at the same time, and it may be different than what we would do if we had forever to make a decision, but there's, there's a set window when things have to happen or not happen. Speaking as someone with a degree in architecture from the University of Michigan, if our architect who has prepared, was the party responsible for the needs assessment for the office, can't come up with the reasonable expectation for how much space we need within this building, then we really ought to consider a different architect. So I'm, I'm saying if this, the square footage on the space is, let's see. Well, it's, it's a lot. It's not like a little wiggle room. If, if his plans for how to use the space is off by that much, that's a big, big issue for me. Additionally, the information as part of this will feed in Additionally, the information as part of this will feed into my decision of, of purchasing the building or not. And I say that because if you want to design the least efficient type of building to maintain, not, and, and to construct, but to maintain, it's a long, skinny building, because it has the, the most surface area you can have, so your heating and cooling costs are going to be the largest possible. And that's something, if we're gonna own this building for a long time, we need to make sure that we're comfortable with that, and/or we have other ways to supplement that cost. So, for me, it is important to know who is, how we might do this. Additionally, it's been discussed, how the space gets used will determine how we purchase it. And so, it may not be used for months and months or years, but we have to know that when we sign on the dotted line. Actually, before we sign on the dotted line, as we prepare the bonds for sale. And that's it. It's an information point. Information's good.
Okay, any further comments?
John has, Maria's trying to get her hand up, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my raised hand feature is not working. Um, just one point, um, to, uh, address one of Zach's concerns. Remember with, um, the Dan Hoy property, with, there is a mechanism where if we don't make the decision now, but we need to pay off some of the bonds later on to, make that percentage that's not covered on the bonds to keep our, um, tax exempt bond, we can do that.
We did, didn't we? Yeah.
Yeah, we did that with Dan Hoy. I don't know all the parameters, but I know it is possible at some point. And we'd have to ask, you know, the attorneys for all the parameters, but it is possible.
A bit more for the processing, for the, the benefit of it, but, yep.
Okay, yeah, thanks for reminding us of that. Okay, so Zach, can you, is your motion, what's on page one seventy-one?
Yep.
Okay, with the idea that that comes back, by when?
Well, before, before the end of our earnest period, a month or so.
Okay, so in, in May is what your memo says above that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so that we could see it by the second meeting in May?
Yeah, but if, if it takes a while to promulgate, I don't think anybody's gonna be too concerned. Just, I, I threw that dart on the board as a starting point, and because it allows some time to spread it, and some time for us to ruminate on it.
Okay, well, I mean, I mean, like, like, like I said, I was asking early on, if it, if it, if we're just throwing this out there and seeking, seeking, you know, open input, it's a data point, it just sits out there, right?
Yep.
But you, you would do it for a month, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, Ms. Jones, we have a motion by Michelle, second by Griffin. Please call the vote.
Yes. Griffin.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Cousins.
Oh.
Fisher.
Oh.
Michelle.
Yes.
Kyo.
I'm gonna support yes, for the interest of, of getting information. I'll let the staff do this for a month. I don't think it hurts to do it. So I'm voting yes. I don't like three, three ties. So motion carries. Um, Justin, if you and your team could do the best you can to solicit some information on the interest in the use of the space.
We will do that.
We'll, we'll bring that back in May as an additional data point. Okay. All right, council, we've ended our new business agenda, council comments this evening. I'm gonna start with the two student representatives. Start with Bella first, and then Alex, please.
Um, hi, okay. I don't really have any council comments, um, but like, I know you guys know that, like, I don't know if you guys know, but like, spring sports have started this year. And like, there's a lot of COVID restrictions, obviously, like, we're having testing like twice a week for contact sports, and I play soccer. So if you guys are interested, like, the away games, people can go to, because like, the soccer fields for us is like really small. But like, on Thursday, we're playing Pinkney, and it's supposed to be a good game, so if you guys would like to show up, it's like at six thirty, but like, the stadiums are very far away. I mean, not far, they're wide, so you probably won't contact with anyone. So that's just an option, if you guys are bored Thursday night, but yeah. Of course, there's other spring sports, too.
Thank you, Bella.
Thanks, Bella. Uh, Alex?
Yeah, we've been fortunate to have some really nice weather lately, so I hope everyone's been able to enjoy it safely in some way.
Thank you, you too, Alex.
Thank you.
Uh, Jamie?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Just good to hear Donna's voice again.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Well, how about if we follow up with Donna? Let's hear Donna's voice.
And I like you too, Paul.
This, we're really coming together, I like it. Zach?
I got it. I kinda feel like we have a little bit in common about our lives being kind of flipped upside down right now, so he's my comrade.
You got it right, Donna.
Yep. I think this has been a good meeting. It's too long for me, but I think it's been a good meeting.
Thanks, Donna. Uh, Zach?
Um, I actually have a quick question here for our student reps. In your opinion, is there enough interest in, uh, in the community for something like a skate park? I know there's a very large one down the road in Ann Arbor, but if you can't drive to get there, what do you guys think? Would there be interest and demand for type of thing like that?
I think there would be, because I know there's a lot of people that skate in Dexter, and like, what they usually do is they go down like the bus loop or something like that. So I think that'd be a good idea, or like, at the, like, least we could like arrange like transportation, like using the wave or something. Oops, sorry.
All right, I agree. There's a lot of interest. I'm not sure we'd be able to put one in Dexter. I think we'd be hard pressed to find any space, but I think it's, it would be nice if we could find the space.
Maybe like in the park, like a small one, I don't know, like the free area.
You get a pool pond table that can double is, is a s- street trick. Uh, thank you. And kind of on sideways of that, my wife and I are a rival hosting an exchange student this year who wants to play soccer here. She currently plays with the club in the Netherlands. And she has also said she wants to play football, because she wants to play the sport she can't play in the Netherlands, so um, that'll be interesting. Have good, happy thoughts for us. It should be an adventure.
What, what, uh, what grade is she, Zach?
Uh, she will be fifteen, turning sixteen, and the Dutch school system is very peculiar. It's got a bunch of numbers and letters, and I couldn't tell you what the equivalent that would be.
Fair enough. I just thought I'd ask. All set? Okay. Thank you for those. Wah, last but not least?
I'm, I'm all set. I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
Okay, we are back around to non-arranged participation. Uh, we have gone from Ohio, I had thirty-two participants on the call, we're at twenty-six now. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? I'm not seeing any hands, so I will seek a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Move by Cousins?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Have a great week, everybody.
Fine, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, staff. Justin, appreciate it.